Good evening and welcome to the first in a series of fiscal year 26 budget hearings hosted by the Boston School Committee and Superintendent Mary Skipper. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask all of my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a virtual meeting, I will ask Ms. Parvex to please call the roll.
Thank you Chair. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Hernandez Hernandez, Mr. Ismael, Ms. Lima Barbossa.
Here.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Tran.
Here.
Mr. O'Neil. Ms. Robinson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you Ms. Parvex. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's hearing documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the February 13th meeting link. The documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cape Verdean, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Before we get started, I want to briefly review the committee's budget process. On the first Wednesday in February, as outlined in the city charter, the superintendent presented her preliminary fiscal year 26 budget proposal to the committee. Starting tonight, the committee will hold a series of hearings to take a deeper look at the superintendent's budget proposal. Tonight's presentation will focus on school budgets. On Wednesday, March 5th, the committee will hold a budget hearing to focus on the central budget. The committee will hold a third and final hearing on March 19th, immediately followed by a regular school committee meeting. Over the course of the next few weeks, committee members are invited to ask questions and suggest modifications to budget items. The community is also invited to ask questions and provide feedback about the superintendent's recommended budget by offering live and written testimony. The superintendent and her team will work diligently to respond to the committee members' questions and suggested modifications, as well as clarify areas of concern before presenting a revised budget to the committee on March 19th. I will now turn it over to the superintendent and her team for the presentation.
Wonderful, thank you Chair and good evening to everybody. So first of all, it's great to be here for the first of the three public school budget hearings. Thank you for the opportunity to explain our budget decisions and how they directly impact our school's abilities to provide every BPS student with access to high-quality student experience they deserve. Last week, the district's finance team joined me in presenting the $1.58 billion FY26 preliminary Boston Public Schools budget. And this really officially kicked off the 2025-26 budget season. We began the presentation by identifying different high-level trends that affected the planning of this year's budget, a full year without Esser funds, and the impact of inflation on our maintenance costs. In addition, after several years of decline, our student enrollment has stabilized. And although our total enrollment is lower than it was a decade ago, the number of students with disabilities and multilingual learners has increased steadily. These factors mean that we need to change the way that we allocate staff and resources while continuing to consider our highest needs students first. As you'll hear tonight, this budget is closely tied to the priorities of this committee as they were identified back at the retreats that we held in the fall, accelerating academic performance by creating high-quality academic experiences for all students through the expansion of equitable literacy and the use of high-quality instructional materials, ensuring access for all students, particularly multilingual learners, students with disabilities, and multilingual learners with disabilities, through the implementation of our inclusive education plan and expanded multilingual programming, and providing a high-quality experience for every student through the district's long-term facilities planning, defined by our community as rigorous and culturally-affirming learning experiences, wellness and enrichment with a supportive network of caring adults in physical spaces that support learning. Our first goal tonight is to give you a clear sense of how we collaborated with school leaders to build out their budgets and at the school level. Particularly, you get to see how we use service mapping as a tool to take a closer look at the needs of individual students and reflect them in each school's budget. Our second goal tonight is to show how we've identified efficiencies and cost savings across the system and strategically directed that money back into classrooms. For example, the $21 million in savings that we've seen through our long-term facilities planning for next year has allowed us to add positions to support expanded multilingual programs, increase the number of dedicated bilingual instructional coaches, and grow our secondary schools' programming, just to name a few. And our last goal tonight is to provide you with a clear understanding of all of our investments at the school level, which include program in school enrollment expansions, 34 new classrooms at 25 schools, and other school-based positions including pairs, teachers, librarians, and swimming programming staff. I want to acknowledge that there is real concern for me and our team about the potential impact of reduced federal funding on our district. However, I believe that in this budget, we've created a fiscally responsible budget that honors our commitment to put students first while maximizing our previous investments and strengthening what we know are the programs and initiatives that work. Chief Financial Officer David Bloom and Budget Director Serena LaRocque are here tonight and they're going to walk us through the district's decision-making process. They're going to explain our school's distribution strategy and they'll review the use of school-based resources, including service mapping, to better support our students. As we mentioned last week, some of our schools have been using service mapping for years. But what's different about this year's budget process is that we did this with all schools in a consistent manner. Service mapping centers our highest needs students first and asks who are we serving, what services do they need, and how will those services be provided? Frank Vicente, who's the Deputy Chief of Instruction from the Office of Specialized Services, is with us tonight and he'll further discuss service mapping and explain how it works by walking us through a day in the lives of two different BPS students. We'll also hear, and we're really excited about this, from two school leaders, Caitlin Murphy from The English High School in Jamaica Plain and Carleen Pignato from the Channing Elementary School in Hyde Park. Each of them will explain how service mapping has helped them to maximize their support of students while also ensuring accuracy during the school budget planning process. I really want to thank Frank, Carleen, and Caitlin for taking the time to be here. It's just a really busy time of year for school leaders. Their firsthand experiences, whether it's supporting schools like Frank or supporting teachers in the classroom like Caitlin and Carleen, they're just so important to informing this conversation for the committee. So at this point, I will turn it over to Chief Bloom and to his team.
Thank you Superintendent. Let me just pull up the presentation here. Good evening Chair and members of the school committee. I'm excited to be back with you today with members of our broader district team to discuss the impact of our FY26 proposed budget on schools. I'm also aware that I'm handing off to three instructional leaders from the district, so I will try and get through my remarks as quickly as possible so you can hear from them, who I know you're excited to hear from. Before we dive in, I wanted to ensure that those who are watching tonight for the first time get some of the basic information we presented last week. We are currently several months into what is almost a year-long budgeting process. This evening marks the second formal session of our school committee engagement around the budget, but as you can see from this slide, it's not the first conversation we've had with the committee or the public. As the superintendent, oop, sorry. As the superintendent mentioned in her comments, this budget is tied to the emerging school committee priorities. We believe that this budget we have presented to you reflects a good portion of those priorities discussed in the fall and we are looking forward to further discussion and refinement. The goal of these investments of the past few years coming out of the pandemic is to deliver a high-quality student experience. We know that some school committee members had questions at the hearing last week of what is meant by high-quality experience. So we wanted to share all of that with you. Much of what we have heard maps directly onto your priorities of the school committee and the feedback we've heard directly from the community through focus groups and listening sessions with over 500 school community members, excuse me, as well as a survey that yielded 9,000 responses. To continue my recap from last week, this is our overall FY26 budget as presented. Thank you to the mayor and all of the school committee members for considering this budget over these two months, a budget of continued growth. We believe this budget is fiscally responsible while enhancing the quality of services our children deserve and positions us to weather any future financial storms. Last week, I told the committee about $43 million of new investments in schools. Later on this evening, our Budget Director Serena LaRocque will share with you in more details on this $43 million in new investment. These investments were only possible thanks to the difficult work that the school committee and the community have engaged in around the long-term facilities plan. This work identified two main types of school-based efficiencies. First, there were savings from closures and reconfigurations under the long-term facilities plan. Second, classroom closures from under-enrolled programs. These were cases where the projected enrollment for the classroom was expected to be zero. Every dollar from these savings was reinvested directly in schools. We also identified savings in central office budgets by going through a zero-based budget process. These savings allow for the continuation of temporarily-funded school-based or student- and family-facing initiatives from school year '25 and are freeing up $5 million for additional investments in schools. We are going to come back to the committee on March 5th to go through these numbers in more detail. Finally, I wanted to share some new information in response to questions we heard from the committee last week to ensure that we are being clear about how money is distributed to schools. Every school started with their baseline budget from FY25 at the beginning of this budget process. As we move forward into FY26, we've made adjustments for average salaries and the opening and closing classrooms I discussed on the previous slide. Schools then had additional investment for inclusive practices, language programs, and ESL services. These allocations are the ones that are most tied to the concept of service mapping that Dr. Chen introduced last week and that we're going to discuss more later today. Finally, we reviewed the allocations for positions given out using a formula, like social workers, psychologists, nurses, to ensure that we have the appropriate ratios to meet the needs of students. There's some information in the appendix of tonight's presentation with what those ratios currently are. Every school went through the same process, but their needs were not the same. An alternative school like Bata with very, with expanding enrollment had very different funding impact than an elementary school with flat enroll. Not mentioned on this slide is the step in the process that's ongoing right now, which is a review of school budgets based on feedback. We know our process works pretty well for schools on average, but we also know if it works well on average, there are probably some schools that doesn't work for individually. When Serena joins later this evening, she will present more information about that review process that is ongoing and where we are in the process. Finally, I want to briefly review the most relevant supplemental materials for our conversation tonight. The first three items on this list all represent different ways of looking at our school budgets comprehensively, so you can understand where every dollar and every school budget comes from. These three documents are documents that we have published traditionally with the school committee, at least all 10 years I have been here. And the second two documents reflect new investments for FY26 around inclusive ed to help understand the rules associated with those investments. The first document explains the total allocations to school rule by rule in a spreadsheet so you can make comparisons. The second document talks about supplemental allocations that are specialized and somewhat unique, giving you an explanation of the rationale for each investment, how much each school got, or sorry, each allocation, how much each school received and why they received their amount if it is not covered by the original rule. The second two documents go through the rules we used to allocate funding for inclusive ed to schools and what guidance we gave to schools around that investment. That guidance explained how schools were to use service mapping to identify the needs of students first and make sure those were funded, and then gave them ideas or concepts for additional resources they could invest in to support inclusive ed. The second document here gives the total investment that each school received, both in last year's budget process for this school year and in this year's budget process for next school year. These items are summative, so FY25 is the total investment for school year '24-'25 and FY26 builds on the FY25 investment to give you an updated total for school year '26. I will now turn it over to my colleague Frank Vicente from the Office of Specialized Services to talk more about our approach to service mapping.
Good evening, members of the school committee, and thank you to Superintendent Skipper for having me to be a part of tonight's presentation. My name is Dr. Frank Vicente. I am the Deputy Chief of Instruction for the Office of Specialized Services for Boston Public Schools, and I'm here this evening to talk to you about the practice of service mapping. Before I dive into the structures of service mapping, I just want to take a moment to frame the opportunities that I've heard a little bit about tonight around service mapping and the benefits. The first is really about equity and access. Service mapping is a key strategy to this because we're committed to ensure that all of our students, and in particular, our highest needs learners, receive the specialized instruction and support that they need and that they're entitled to. The second is about maximizing inclusion. In BPS, we believe in the power of the inclusive classroom. And service mapping allows us to look at services strategically and build schedules that maximize the time for our students with disabilities and for our English language learners to spend in the general education classroom with their peers, and then ultimately data-driven scheduling. Instead of taking a one-size-fits-all approach to the work, when we service map, we use data about students and their needs to drive our scheduling and make informed decisions. And what that does is it allows us to look at our resources and allocate them both effectively and equitably. So let's talk a little bit about what service mapping is. So when we service map, what we're doing is we're taking a student-centered approach by identifying the specific academic, social-emotional, and language development needs of our special education and our English language learner students, and we are prioritizing their service delivery. The way that we create that priority is by looking at strategic instructional groupings and we build schedules for those essential services first. So this includes specialized instruction, related services like speech therapy or counseling, and designated instruction for our English language learners. And then we build our universal schedules around those needs. So once we have those critical services identified and they're placed in the schedule, we can build the rest of the school's schedule around them and that ensures that these students' needs are met and that we can maximize their access to inclusive classrooms. It also puts us in the best place to optimize our resources. So service mapping helps us to understand what our resource allocation looks like and by seeing where our services are delivered, we can identify our gaps and we can ensure that we're using our staffing effectively and our resources effectively. Can we jump to the next slide? So the benefits of service mapping. When we service map, we're able to increase inclusion because we're prioritizing services and creating schedules that support the maximum time for our targeted students in the general education classroom. We're putting ourselves in the best position possible to improve our student outcomes because we are being really thoughtful about making sure that we have the correct services, the right services at the right time for our students and thinking about improving their academics, their social-emotional, and their language development needs and outcomes. And then again, I want to reiterate that equitable resource allocation. Service mapping really helps us to ensure that our resources are distributed based on what our student needs and not just taking that general one-size approach to the work. It also creates greater transparency. The process provides transparency in how we're meeting the needs of our students largely because of the level of involvement and the strong team approach that we take by talking to each other with the data that we have. So my hope is, as you hear about service mapping and you learn about it, it'll help you to understand how we're working to achieve and maximize the experience with our students. But what we wanted to do tonight is just take some time to take a look specifically at the student experience by looking at a couple of student profiles. So to illustrate this, I want to first introduce a student by the name of Sammy. So Sammy is a fourth grade student. Sammy has an IEP that outlines that she must receive math instruction from a special education teacher. She's also provided speech and language services three times a week to address her communication disability. And furthermore, as an English language learner, Sammy requires 90 minutes of English as a second language instruction every week. And this is delivered by an ESL teacher. So to meet these needs, Sammy's school has structured the following schedule. You can see Sammy's day begins in the homeroom for morning meeting and social-emotional learning. Sammy attends her ESL class in a separate room with six other students who share a similar level of English proficiency. She then participates in specials with art being her favorite before having science, lunch, and recess. Sammy is then pulled out of class for math instruction in a small group setting with a special education teacher. She returns to her homeroom for history and is pulled out three times a week for her speech and language services. And Sammy concludes her day with 45 minutes of support in the resource room. So in total, Sammy spends 1,215 minutes each week outside of her homeroom classroom. Now looking at our next slide, we look at a student by the name of Saul. So Saul is also a fourth grade student. And Saul's IEP specifies that he requires additional math support from a special education teacher, as well as occupational therapy services three times a week to assist with his fine motor needs. And like Sammy, Saul is an English learner and he receives 90 minutes of ESL direct instruction daily. His school has made intentional efforts to integrate the services he requires within his homeroom classroom setting. So Saul's day begins with morning meeting and SEL instruction and after which his ESL teacher, Mrs. Smith, team teaches alongside with his homeroom teacher, Ms. Jones for English Language Arts and ESL Instruction. So Ms. Jones has her SEI endorsement, a recourse required by DESI that teaches content educators how to shelter classroom instruction for English language learners. Saul then attends specials followed by science, lunch, and recess. Saul participates in math instruction with his homeroom where both his classroom teacher and special education teacher collaborate to support his learning. And throughout the day, Saul engages with grade-level content and has multiple opportunities to interact with peers who serve as his language models. He attends history class before being pulled out three times a week for his occupational therapy services. Saul finishes his day in another classroom with additional resources, or excuse me, additional resource room supports. The total amount of time Saul spends outside of his main classroom is 315 minutes a week. Now while both examples of service delivery align with the guidelines set forth by DESI and ensure that neither Sammy nor Saul is separated from their peers for extended periods, we encourage the school leaders to reflect on these examples and how they might provide students with more frequent opportunities for inclusion in the general education setting. So by looking at these two opportunities, we can see students with similar profiles in different ways that we can map out their services and be thoughtful in their scheduling and the resources that we need to have in place to maximize their services. So at every school, we map out services for each student and by doing that, we're ensuring that we have staffing models that support the needs of all of our learners and we allow our schools to maximize resources, which teaches, it allows us to really think about where our teachers are at and what our students need and how do we put ourselves in the best position possible, both with resources and with important expertise in service of our children. So we've been very excited about the potential of service mapping and how it improves the outcomes of our students. We're going to continue to refine this process and provide regular updates to the school committee on our progress. We welcome your feedback and support as we work to continue to implement this important initiative. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share this information tonight and I am going to introduce my colleague, Ms. Carleen Pignato, who will continue to speak about service mapping from the school leader experience. Thank you. who will continue to speak about service mapping from the school leader experience. Thank you. Carleen, I think you're still on mute.
Well, thank you for that, because I started speaking. Well, let me start over. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carleen Pignato, and I am the school leader at Channing Elementary School in Hyde Park. We are a small but vibrant school with an active school site council and parent council. Our school norms are to be safe, respectful, responsible, and inclusive. I am a proud product of the Boston Public Schools, and I learned English as my third language in the district schools. I am excited to be here tonight to talk about what inclusive education has meant for us and our school community. See, our inclusive education journey started in the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to prepare all of our educators to give students differentiated access to social and academic experiences to ensure that every student has the right to engage with their typically developing peers using our TIL-1 curriculum. We partnered with the Office of Specialized Services and our expert teachers here at Channing to provide school-wide professional development so that we can all acquire shared understanding and mindset, mindset on two things that were critical. We knew that we needed to deepen our understanding of behavior as communication because we needed to develop inclusive, class-wide, positive behavior and support systems. We also knew that we needed to infuse evidence-based methodology into our TIL-1 curriculum to give all students access to high-quality teaching and learning experiences. So during our professional learning together and in partnership with our schools, our school site council members, we knew that we needed to revise our school vision to ensure that it aligned with our district's equitable literacy priorities, which by the way, happens to also align with the school committee's priorities. Our vision is pretty lengthy, and you will notice the content and the connection between our district's equitable literacy and the school committee's priority. Here it is. Channing invests in people and resources to achieve daily academic excellence and social responsibility to support the belief that with rigorous instruction and high academic standards in the least restrictive environment, which is not just the law, but children's rights, that all students, all children are bound for success in life when they have access to services based on their individual needs, intersectionalities, and entry points to grade-level standards or above. I'm sure you have noticed the connection between our equitable literacy and our school commi- committee priorities in Channing's vision. So when we learned that we were transitioning to inclusive education as a district, we were thrilled for two main reasons. One, we had already renewed our collective mindset with the support of our school site council members. And our collective mindset was on providing inclusive learning experiences to all of our students. And the shift in our student population with an increase in our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities, and we could not have done better if we had not engaged and the district provided professional learning opportunities for school leaders, for teachers, for parents, and other service personnel. So all of the work that we had done the year prior with the equitable literacy that happens to connect with the school committee's priorities, revising our vision, all of these components really, really put us in a position to really succeed. You know, while we have historically created some version of service mapping at the school level, we had not previously considered it in a thoughtful and calculated way the district designed it. And for a very long time, we thought, we are student-centered until we experienced the district's service mapping. Collaborating to complete the service mapping document with our educators here at Channing empowered us to plan for individual students using data from the perspectives of all adults who service them. When it came time to present my service map during this year's budget collab, I quickly realized that departments are speaking the same language. And they were at the table intently listening to build the school's budget, not as a means to comply with regulations, but especially to materialize high-quality student experiences. And I'm going to give a quick example of what we've done in the past and our current practices to meet the needs of our students. I like to think of them as three interconnected phases so that we can show how we have evolved as a school because the district has evolved in the way that we see service mapping, which connects with centering students in the budget process. So during our budget collab, the team discovered through our service mapping that we had done at the school level with different teachers and support personnel and noticed that our enrollment projections would see that we would continue to have distinct student populations with the same service delivery determinations for one and two. So we used to hear ELD one, ELD two. It's a, it's a similar language with service delivery determination, meaning that students with ELD one and two, they are just learning to learn English, uh, not just socially, but to prepare them for college and career. And we also had students with service determination one and two who needed specialized instruction. And both populations required ninety minutes of instruction with a licensed ESL teacher and additional moderate services with a licensed special educator. Yes, regulations support combining these two groups for ESL instruction. This was phase one. And in budget meetings, that's where the conversation ended. We met compliance. There's the budget. No further conversation was necessary because we checked off the list, we met compliance. So as I talk about phase two and phase three, please consider this. Our process now and moving forward ensures that phases two and three are the norm. Moving forward. So in phase two, we collectively named that students with significantly, significantly different learning profiles must access TIL-1 curriculum and receive targeted additional instruction to accelerate their learning. Something that was part of academics and instructional leadership in schools. It was not part of the budget process. Phase two, which once required fierce advocacy, and my principal school leader colleagues can attest to that. It's not the norm. Leaders are expected to discuss individual needs within the instructional groups and make decisions based on a shared understanding of providing high-quality student experiences aligned with the budget. And the Budget's Office has a transparent system of funding distribution. And part of their priorities are, we must provide students with the least restrictive learning and social opportunities. And that is in the inclusive classroom where our children belong. We must account for our multilingual learner needs, having been one myself and is still one, and the needs of our students with disabilities. And in, in this and final phase, phase three, the budget collab team reached a decision that was informed by multiple sources and, and of information. School language pathologists, OT, special ed teacher, home teacher, school leader observations, meetings, uh, teaming structures. All of that was considered in building the school's future budget. The Budget's Office considered the needs of our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. And for example, in the case of Channing, allocated funding for a learning specialist to plan for and implement specialized instruction through behavior analytics, both within and outside of the inclusive classroom. This process recognizes each student's specific needs. The learning specialist, in collaboration with existing teaming structures at the school, including ESL teachers, will recognize each student's specific needs based on the concept of the whole child. This is sure to make each student's schooling experience memorable for them and for the adults who serve them. Our shared goal to ensure all students have the maximum opportunity to learn alongside their peers using quality curriculum, effective instructional groupings, learning tools, technology, resources, materials, and trained personnel to support them. There's no other way but to thrive. The district's new service mapping approach and collaboration with the Budget Office guarantee that, and I will quote, "Every child has the same unfeathered access to every conceivable tool to unlock the greatness within them." And that's a quote from the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Policy. I now turn it to my colleague, Caitlin Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you, Carleen. My name is Caitlin Murphy, and I am the school leader at the English High School in Jamaica Plain. English High School serves over seven hundred and fifty students in grades seven through twelve. Our middle school program is in its third year and was created as a full inclusion program. And currently, our ninth and tenth grades are full inclusion settings. We also have two substantially separate programs, one in the high school for students with complex disabilities and an emotional impairment program for students in grades seven through twelve. While both programs have substant- substantially separate classrooms, we have created many opportunities for inclusion with their classmates in the general education programs across the school day. At the secondary level, our planning for inclusive classrooms attends both to the need to provide our students with the support and specially-designed instruction that they need to master grade-level standards and to our commitment to providing choice in their course selection as they work towards meeting their mass core requirements. We are also mindful that for all of our students, we are tasked with doing all that we can in the time they are with us to prepare them for post-secondary independence. Through the lens of inclusive education for students with disabilities and multilingual learners, this means being intentional about planning for a shift over time to greater independence and least restrictive environments as appropriate for the individual student, but with the ultimate goal that students are ready to navigate the world once they have earned a diploma. This year, our work has been informed by the service mapping process, and it has allowed our team to deepen our understanding of what supports and services our students need at a more macro level. When approaching building the master schedule or staffing supports, this process allows us to both ensure we are meeting the needs of the individual student as represented in their IEP, while also seeing trends across the school and by grade level about the types of stu- services our students need. That work of service mapping, combined with the implementation of the new IEP, has led to rich conversations in our team about how to ensure that all staff members working with a student can more deeply understand that student's needs and services and how we might collaborate in teams to provide a variety of access points to the curriculum. In one of our grade levels this year, we were able to use the service mapping process to adjust the second semester classes for students in math to more closely match student need with staffing. And the result of this shift has been that the students, some of whom were struggling in semester one, now nearly a month into the second semester, are having a much better experience, which we believe will lead to a stronger understanding of math content. We're also working to provide all educators in the building with professional learning experiences that allow them to more deeply understand how a student's disability will show up in their content class so that they are prepared to collaborate in a meaningful way with the other team members who are supporting that student. If all team members can move beyond a cursory understanding of specific learning disabilities, we are all in a better position to support a student, whether we are the science teacher, the school counselor, or the assistant principal. From a budgetary and scheduling perspective, the service mapping process provides an organizing framework for conversations about the best way to provide services to students. And it allows us to see in a snapshot all of the students who need a particular service in one place. Given the highly complex nature of secondary scheduling, high school schedules, the master schedule is very, very complex. This tool has helped us to understand what kinds of staffing we need for the students we currently serve. And over time, we hope that it will help us to see trends that will help us to predict the needs of the students in our entry years. So those students who are coming to us in seventh grade, generally from in the district, sometimes from other places, and those students that are coming in the ninth grade whose IEPs we won't see until we actually meet them in person, which is, um, you know, months after the schedule has been built. The increased flexibility provided in this year's budget process of an allocation for inclusion supports that did not prescribe a particular staffing model has allowed our team to look has allowed our team to look at the service delivery data, reflect on the first year of the high school inclusion rollout, and then make decisions as a team that is based in data and the lived experience of our community, and then decide on staffing requests that best meet those needs. Our work at English is just beginning, but with these supports and the dedicated educators in my building, I think that we are in a good place to create the conditions in which our students will be able to grow and thrive. Thank you for the opportunity to share, and I will now turn it over to our Budget Director Serena LaRocque.
Thank you, Caitlin. Our focus remains on building school-based budgets that prioritize student needs. This year, we reinvested in schools through both city funding and the strategic reallocation of district resources. These efforts were made possible by identifying and implementing efficiencies, a process we began in fiscal year twenty-five and continue to deepen. This is the challenging but necessary work of redirecting resources that have been stretched too thin, ensuring they are effectively used more effectively to better service our students. We have identified two types of key efficiencies. One, through central office. So this year, through zero-based budgeting, we thoroughly reviewed our budget from top to bottom, eliminating legacy programs that no longer service our students effectively. Our focus this year was to minimize the impact on schools by first identifying savings within the central office budget. We're going to discuss these efficiencies in greater detail during the March fifth meeting. The second is through school efficiencies, our focus today. While we are committed to ensuring all schools receive the necessary funding to support students, including those with declining enrollment, we also must find efficiencies. This means striking that fine balance, accurately estimating the cost of student programming, such as service mapping, as discussed by Carleen and Caitlin and also Frank, avoiding funding empty classrooms, and advancing our long-term facilities plan, including school closures and reconfigurations. These efficiencies have allowed us to reinvest directly into schools, expanding opportunities for all students. This includes adding staff at Gardner, Haley, and Hernandez, as well as introducing surround care for KO, K2, and expanding our program. Our holistic approach ensures that schools receive the financial support they need, provide a high-quality education, while making the most of our available resources. Now, we know that efficiencies can impact our staff. We want to make sure that we are supporting them through any changes that impact them. For smaller changes that impact one to two classrooms in a school, we try as much as possible to identify vacant positions that employees can transition into the same school. If there is not a position at their school, we work to ensure they have one at another school. Permanent teachers that are excess are guaranteed a job in the district. And for our provisional educators who have worked in our districts for less years, we provide them with the support with job applications and they receive recommendations from their school leaders. Our goal is to retain our talented educators and ensure we have diverse staff. We know that when a school closes, there's a larger impact on staff, and we work to ensure that those impacted have every opportunity to remain in our system. As we reinvested funds and allocated new dollars from the city, our top priority was investing in inclusive education. In addition to school-based budgets, we provided additional funding by considering the number of students they serve in general education setting, including those in substantially separate classrooms who benefit from learning alongside their peers in an inclusive environment. To ensure schools could best meet their students' needs, we provided flexibility, allowing them to first identify necessary services and support through service mapping process, and then allocate their funding accordingly, including any supplemental services aligned with our guidance. In some cases, school identified additional needs after completing their service mapping, as Frank described earlier. When this happens, we review these requests and allocate additional funding as needed from the reserves we establish. Our goal is to ensure equity by addressing the specific needs of students at each school. While our funding formula worked for most schools, we recognize that there will always be outliers. This approach balances the consistency of a funding formula with the flexibility to meet the unique needs of students. Earlier, Carleen and Caitlin shared the impact of these investments and the service mapping process at their school. And you received a document tonight with more detailed information about this allocation and guidance on the use of these funds. Our second investment priority was expanding access to and support for multilingual education. Through this investment, we added resources to strengthen both new and existing multilingual programs and ensure that all students have the necessary ESL staffing to meet student needs as outlined in their service map. This includes additional staffing support for schools launching new multilingual programs, funding to enhance dual-language bilingual education, and dedicated bilingual instruction coaches for the school expanding dual-language programming. Or schools who have dual-language programming in our underrepresented languages such as Vietnamese, Haitian Creole, Cape Verdean Creole. We are also building out curriculum and professional development resources for our new programs. All of these investments are in addition to school-based budgets. Our inclusion and multilingual investments use the majority of our new funding from the city to ensure we were aligned with our school committee priority two, ensuring access for all students. These two items are not the only things reflected in this budget. Following school committee priority one, accelerating academic performance, we invested in expanding secondary school programming to provide additional opportunities for students to have access to advanced coursework and vocational programming. On this slide, you'll see a number of those investments being made. Finally, as I mentioned earlier, we reinvested money from our school closures, reconfigurations, and classroom closures for those with little to no students projected and reinvested that money in new programs and program expansions at schools across the district based on enrollment and need. This allows for a wide range of students to experience the best that BPS has to offer, including at the new buildings for the Carter School and Quincy Upper. Now, before we close, I wanted to speak briefly about where we are in the school budget review process. As David and then I mentioned earlier, while our funding formula meets the needs of most schools, we recognize that some schools have unique circumstances. We recognize that we need to take a balanced approach. Our approach strives to maintain the consistency of a funding formula while allowing the flexibility to address specific student needs. To support this, we established a process rooted in student data and needs that allows schools to request additional resources beyond their initial allocation. When reviewing these requests, we consider multiple factors, including student needs based on data, a school's existing funding and staffing level, available discretionary dollars to the school, and how the school chose to use those funds. Schools have submitted their requests and our teams are actively reviewing them. This process will be finalized by the end of the month so that the superintendent can include her recommendation in the final proposal to school committee. Now, lucky me, because we wanted to minimize transition, I got to borrow this moment from David to talk about our budget book. We're excited to be presenting you with a working version of the budget book later this month for your review and feedback. And we will be publishing the final version with your approved budget. Finally, we will be taking a little break between now and our next budget hearing on central budget on March fifth. That will be the third of the five meetings to discuss and vote on the budget. And we look forward to taking your feedback and questions. Thank you. And now I'll pass it over.
Thank you all for the presentation. And because this is a budget hearing, I want to pause here and open it up to questions from the committee. Ms. Plonco Garcia?
Thank you, Malanga. Y thank you for the presentation. Tengo varias preguntas. Voy a empezar por el caso de Sammy. Me pareció muy interesante.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I'm going to start with the case of Sammy. I think that's very important.
Si me pareció interesante cómo plantearon el caso de Sammy dentro de la presentación.
So I thought it was very important how they discussed the case of Sammy in this presentation.
Yeah. Lo que pude ver en el caso de Sammy es que actualmente toda la instrucción de él es en inglés, incluyendo ESL, matemática y ciencias.
So what I was able to see with the case of Sammy is that all the instruction was done in English, including English, math, and science.
Entonces, como hemos estado hablando de la implementación de usar la lengua materna como apoyo para la instrucción, ¿verdad?, de nuestros estudiantes, en ese sentido he elaborado mi pregunta.
Since we have been talking about how to use the native language as a support for instructions, so based on that, I'm going to ask my question.
¿Cómo vamos a garantizar, cómo el distrito va a garantizar que este estudiante desarrolle habilidades de lectura y escritura en su idioma nativo además del inglés?
So my question is, how will the district guarantee the development of reading and writing in their native language and in English?
I don't know if there's... I can start. I think it would be great if Joel were also able to come on. Great. So I think what we didn't define in this particular one is whether Sammy and Saul were in any kind of specific programming. It was just a generic classroom situation, more to show how services would get delivered. We didn't specify, for instance, if they were with a teacher that was in a bilingual track. But Joel, you might have more information on this particular example?
Sure. Thank you, Superintendent.
Perdón, para clarificar un poco, cuando analizamos el caso de Sammy, él es un estudiante multilingüe con necesidades específicas. Pero estamos en el análisis, se está enfatizando que es un estudiante multilingüe.
Just to clarify more the case of Sammy, it's said, it's described that he is a multilingual learner with specific needs. And based on the analysis, it was also said that he is a multilingual learner.
Y entonces, en ese sentido, toda la instrucción que vi en él es muy parecido a lo que pasa hoy con nuestros estudiantes multilingües, que toda la instrucción es en inglés. Yo pensé que iba a haber un cambio para impulsar el idioma nativo en todo lo que es el proceso de su... del día, de un día a día con el estudiante.
So in that sense, I saw that the instruction that Sammy is getting is similar to what our students are receiving nowadays, that all of the instruction is done in English. I thought that we were going to see some changes in how to use the native language as a support in the day-to-day learning experience.
Sure. Thank you so much for your question, Member Garcia Plonco. It all depends on the format or the program model that Sammy is in. If Sammy is in a dual-language school and Sammy's receiving ESL instruction, then yes, Sammy is receiving some native language instruction. If Sammy is in an inclusive model, then Sammy is receiving the ESL instruction that is required for the time and minutes that is required for Sammy to receive it. His ESL teacher will utilize language acquisition instructional skills to help Sammy utilize and learn English. And as all schools that we have in BPS, we want to ensure that families feel very welcomed. But again, it's a choice for every family. Not every family will choose a dual-language school or a program like that would provide native language instruction. But the school will also utilize, will have a welcoming experience for Sammy. But it all depends on the program model that is utilized at the school.
Thank you for the clarification. La segunda pregunta que tengo es sobre el mapeo. Me resulta curioso cómo vamos a asegurar que el proceso de mapeo de servicio, ¿verdad?, se mantenga actualizado con las necesidades cambiantes de estudiantes. Esto así?
So my second question, or the second question that I have, is regarding the mapping service. So I'm very curious if we are making sure through the process, if we are providing support to the services, given that the needs are in constant changing or constantly evolving and are changing.
Porque cada estudiante tiene sus necesidades, pero la proyección es que vamos a tener mucho más estudiantes multilingües, ¿verdad? Entonces, ¿cómo vamos a tener el personal suficiente? Qué cantidad de maestros, de especialistas que podemos recibir dentro del presupuesto? Están en el mapeo que hice, vi que se van a necesitar esto, que se van a necesitar maestros de educación, terapias, terapias de lectura, maestros multilingües, que sean bilingües. ¿Cómo vamos a hacer? ¿Cómo vamos a asegurar ese proceso?
So every student that, you know, the need of every student, for example, the multilingual learner student. So how are we making sure in the process this projection? Since we're seeing that we will have more multilingual learners and we're seeing that in our projection, so how are we making sure? So how are we making sure we have the, per the staff, the number of staff with, you know, specialists about reading, writing? So since through this mapping service, we're seeing this, that we're gonna need therapists like specialized in reading, we need staff to teach multilingual learners. How are we making sure that these staff are bilingual as well? So how are we making sure we are doing that through the process?
Thank you for that question. I can answer the first part for sure. So we do a couple of things to ensure we're ready to meet the needs of students for the upcoming year. The first is, we look closely at our enrollment patterns over time to project an estimate of future need. So if we see a school's enrollment has been growing with multilingual learners, we'll often project continued growth. We then do the service mapping based off a combination of what are the needs of the students in front of the school right now? And what is the estimate for future growth? Now, we know there's no way we're gonna get that perfectly right. And we don't know who's actually going to be enrolled next year at this point in the process. So what we do as well is create a reserve for additional enrollment. And we start reviewing that reserve in early April as soon as round one assignments go out. And Frank and several members of his team and Joel and members of her team are in meetings that we have multiple times a month to review enrollment at schools, review issues we're hearing from schools, and ensure we're hiring staff as soon as we know there might be additional need in a school.
Thank you.
I think the, I think the other part to that, and Frank, maybe this is one that you can address, is I think Member Polanco Garcia is also asking, as enrollment is fluid and changes during the school year, school leaders will do the service mapping at the beginning to set the schedule, but then how do we use it as enrollment changes? Or as, say, a student's IEP needs change or multilingual learners' needs changed? How can a school leader use it throughout the year?
Sure, thank you. So just to give some more context, one of the primary components of a service map is the development of instructional groupings. So when we look at instructional groupings, what we are doing is we're looking at common profiles of students. And we are taking into consideration students with disabilities, students who are multilingual learners, and students that represent both of those populations. And so we consider the, the learning profiles of those students related to their disability. We also look at our STD levels, which define the levels of service for our second language learners. And we work within the confines of both of those areas of need to determine instructional grouping so that we can think about the students that we can service together, what's the appropriate size of those groupings, and then use that context to have more enriched conversations at the school level about what does that mean for our staffing? What does that mean for our resources? What does that mean for our scheduling? What it allows is this multidisciplinary conversation to come together, to look at all of those different components. So when we have our individual groupings and we start to build out the work around them, we start by looking at each one of those groups. And when we have an identified group of students, we then ask the question, so what do these kids need? And so as we build out multiple groups, then we start to collectively talk as a school, what does the school need? And that's, we can look at those patterns and we can identify the needs both in the present. And we can do that as the school continues to evolve. And as we continue to revisit this process of service mapping and creating instructional groupings and working on putting together numerical representations that service kids in the best way possible. So really what it does is it creates an opportunity for an important data-informed discussion that's based on the identified needs of kids. And then we can look at holistically, what does that mean for us as a school to make sure that we can then ask the questions when we get to all of these other processes, including our work with David Bloom and his team in budget, to think about how are we gonna service kids in the best way possible?
Thank you for the clarification. Se me ocurre, yo quería decirles también que cuando ustedes están haciendo estos servicios de mapeo y que me parece interesante. No he visto cómo han involucrado la familia en este proceso. Porque la familia juega un papel determinante y pueden ser de gran ayuda.
So. Yeah, thank you. Something I want to say about the mapping service is if you've been able to engage the families, if the families are engaged in this process, because they can be a determinant factor and they can help.
¿Cómo han involucrado la familia? ¿La han involucrado? ¿Han pensado en que este grupo, como decía, como él decía, que va a haber un grupo que va a encargarse de analizar qué necesita la escuela? ¿Cómo han involucrado, cómo han pensado en involucrar a la familia en esto?
So how have you thought about engaging families? Because he mentioned that they have a group working and analyzing this. So have you thought of it, about it? Or how are you thinking of engaging families in this process?
Thank you for that question. So I can start. And I can tell you that through service mapping and thinking about our instructional groupings, this is one bit of information and data that we can bring into the IEP process. So oftentimes, as we're thinking about service delivery specific to our students with disabilities, we have the opportunity to talk about where they're currently at with their needs and what's happening around them and the ways that we're thinking about their services in terms of their current data, in terms of their progress, and then engage, you know, our multidisciplinary team and our parents as stakeholders through the process at that level. I'm not sure if Caitlin or if any of other school leadership have any thoughts beyond that. But one way we can definitely use that information is when we invite parents into the IEP process and engage them through that conversation when we're thinking about that work. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I see lots of hands up, but I think the first was Ms. Lima Barbosa, followed by Dr. Alkins, and then Mr. Ishmael.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the team for the presentation. I wanted to start just sort of going back to the overview of why we're here and the, you know, your objective, not only the finance team, definitely in collaboration with the community engagement team on centering communities, particular schools that historically have been underserved. I, I know throughout your presentation, I'm probably able to identify how you all have done that. But it would be good if you could give examples of maybe new monies, new dollars that really are impacting said communities. And we're talking about Black students, we're talking about multilingual students, students with disabilities and all the intersectionality that comes with that. So it would be really good to hear more from the district, like what, what were those priorities? What were those changes that are going to be impacting these particular communities? Talking about new monies and unnecessarily the same budget items that we always, unless we've increased it at a particular amount, that, that also nice to learn.
Thank you so much for that question because it, it gives me an opportunity to go back and correct something, I think, in my presentation that I didn't spend enough time on, which is we've made a pretty big structural change to our school budget process recently. And I promise, Member Lima Barbosa, I'm getting back to your question. But when, when I first started in the district, we used weighted student funding. And we were getting a lot of feedback about weighted student funding as we went through the process. I actually remember from my, our two school leader colleagues who are here tonight have given me some pretty spirited feedback over the years about weighted student funding and what was working and what wasn't working. And one of the things we found, and we presented this to the school committee probably just before the pandemic, was that weighted student funding was creating a cycle, a vicious cycle of disinvestment in schools, where a school would lose some enrollment, not a huge amount, but enough to reduce their weighted student funding budget. It wouldn't be enough enrollment loss to, for them to be able to close any classrooms or for them to adjust their instructional needs. And so they would have to take their reduction in weighted student funding and lose art programs, social workers, librarians, all of the sorts of things that make school more than just school, right? That help build it into a thriving community. And so with all that feedback, we launched what we call the Reimagine School Funding Process to think about what could a new system look like. And so one of the key things that is in this presentation that is different than prior years is every school starts with their prior year budget. And they only get reductions if it's tied to a specific lack of student need. And that may not sound like an investment. But what we found was with weighted student funding, when we did the analysis, the schools with persistent enrollment decline were impacted by that cycle I just mentioned earlier. Were disproportionately schools serving our Black and Latinx youth, right? And what we have found through that, through this change is we've been able to stem that cycle, right? So schools may still be losing some money in their budget, right? But they're losing that money because they have an entire classroom that can be consolidated. And they're not losing a librarian, an art teacher, a social worker. Unless there are really significant shifts happening in that school's enrollment that we need to make more major adjustments. And so while it may not seem like new money, it really is something that we think is really important and is sort of an investment away from the reductions in weighted student funding. I'll, I'll then also just add, I think when we look at our investments in inclusive and multilingual learners, what we're seeing is those investments are disproportionately affecting our Black and Latinx youth as well as multilingual learners and students with disabilities. And that was actually in the, there's some of that analysis in the Equity Impact Statement we shared with you last week. But we didn't, we didn't bring it up at the time. So thank you for mentioning it tonight.
No, no, no worries. And just to kind of keep on the same theme, and I'm only bringing up the school, not because I'm biased and I'm an alum, but it is a budget that I looked at. And I'm gonna use it as an example because I feel like that the Dr. Holland School of Technology, there's a lot of similar high schools or just throughout the district, schools that serve a similar population and the same population that we just spoke about in terms of Black students, immigrants, students with disabilities, and so on. I'm curious to see schools like Dr. Holland that has 430 students. And I'm only seeing a one budget item for guidance counselor. I'm a little bit concerned, and I know that's not a unique structure or, or staff allocation. So I'm, again, I'm using this as an example, but I think it's something that we should look into holistically of schools that serve these type of populations. But there are very key, crucial, crucial roles, like a guidance counselor, that is as important as we're trying to invest in the academic space, right? In the academic learning. But I'm also thinking about the services that the same students are getting when, when we talk about guidance counselors. There are students that need more support when it comes to SAT prep, when it comes to MCAS prep. There are students that are first generation, so they have no idea what to ask the guidance counselor when it comes to going to a college or other career pathways. That does not necessarily mean college career. So if one school has 430 students, I'm concerned that we are not staffing, you know, folks. And I do recognize that our external partners that we have, they usually partner with some schools to support our students that are thinking about college career pathways. But I'm aware that, you know, the guidance counselors has, has a lot of tasks. It's also mentoring. It's, some of them have to just hear students vent about their personal life. So I'm concerned there because I think it's something that is as important as we're investing in classrooms. When we talk about inclusion education plan, we should also think about those type of positions. And that's nursing, everything else, right? And we've heard nurses all year telling us that they feel overwhelmed, it's a lot of students. So I think it's, it could be the same experience from some of the guidance counselors. So we'd love to hear more, how you're making decisions of
Yeah.
how many guidance counselors per school, especially when we're talking about we're centering this population. So if we are, how can we do that there?
So a couple, I have a couple of thoughts on that. And, and thank you for pushing our thinking on it. The first is, there's something we need to improve in our communication. And we are very close to being done with that improvement, and we'll share with you soon. Which is, there's sort of, there's a difference between the allocations we give and what schools actually budget. So historically, the district didn't allocate guidance counselors specifically. Starting about five, four or five years ago, as we were rolling out Mass Core, we started an investment in guidance counselors for ninth grade. And so we should be more specific in this document, that's what this allocation is. So the Holland School actually does have two guidance counselors in their, in their budget. But the allocation only reflects one because we were only sort of allocating above their sort of base allocation, that one additional one for ninth grade. I think this is a real sort of challenge in the way we present and explain our budget and in the way we do our allocations. So one of the things we're thinking about as we shift to weighted, to reimagine school funding is how much do we specifically require schools to have versus how much flexibility we give them? Because the more requirements we offer schools, where let's say you have to have one guidance counselor for every 200 students, whatever it ends up being, right? Then the flex, the flexibility they have is limited. So we're trying to sort of strike that balance. So at the Holland School, they have two, one that was part of their weighted student funding original allocation and one that was supplemental.
I think this is, this is a good, it is a good point, though, about the college career and guidance. And I think the other piece to this is, is that as we talk kind of about the social, emotional, academic supports, schools have had some flexibility with how to be able to use allocations too. So in the case of Holland, like there's also deliberateness around social workers and expenditure on social workers, Slife Social Worker, which was added in. And so I think that they see it as a team of individuals, like schools look at this in different ways. But they see it as like a team of individuals who support the whole child, right? Whether that's the college process, whether that is, you know, the social emotional counseling piece, whether it's the family connection. But I, I think your point's really well taken, Member Lima Barbosa, because I think we need to find a clearer way to represent that so that you can actually see what the organization looks like. So I, I think we can take that back and, and look at it.
That makes a lot more sense. I, I also think it's just ensuring that the schools are actually hiring and have the two guidance counselors. They tend to take a lot of additional tasks when others leave their office or leave for whatever reason. So it's just, again, it was a very critical. I had, I had like three different guidance counselors at Burke when I was a student.
Yeah.
And to hear that this year they've been functioning with one, it was a little bit, you know, concerning. So I went to look at the budget, like, okay, how is, are we making any changes there? And how can we do that? Another thing that I did not see in their budget, David, maybe it's another, it's somewhere else and not in the school budget in particular, is the K Varian Heritage Program at the Holland. I know it did not work out this year because they didn't have any staffing, but just curious if it's not in the budget right now. Why? Or maybe it's somewhere else, maybe a department that funds it, just curious there.
I think actually, Joel, it would be good if you could, I know this is an active conversation for us.
Yeah.
Particularly as we're thinking about, you know, the excitement of the dual language at the, went through a class. Particularly as we're thinking about, you know, the excitement of the dual language um, at the uh, Winthrop clap merger. And then what does that mean for a high school? Um, Joel, do you have any update on that?
Um, yes, well, not really like an update, but we were actually having a team meeting today. We were talking intensely about um. Uh, sorry, in talking about heritage courses for our students and especially highlighting for our, what we consider, you know. Not that it's not special, but Haitian Creole, Cape Verdean, um, Creole, Vietnamese. Thinking about pathways since we have dual language programs for those languages and thinking of pathways as options for students. But then also thinking about schools that have high populations of certain language groups. And um, creating those courses, heritage courses, courses at those schools there. Uh, the main point of the heritage course would be for more students to attain the seal of bilinguality. And so we will work within our department and um, outreach to other departments too about um, looking at where we can. Implement them and also I'm just increasing that opportunity for students in the district. But yes, I know the Holland once had it and um, is really interested in, in having it again.
And there are, there are two positions in the, two teaching positions in the budget for the program.
For the program, is that on the school, on the school's budget on a one pager right now?
It's not on, so it's part of their.
The one page is where I'm looking at, like where's everything, but I know uh, gonna tell me every single thing in detail, but.
It's tricky because it's a part of their base allocation, like sort of the base instruction. And so I think um, one of the things you'll see, you're going to get as a part of the budget book is you're going to get. A second page. Because I think the allocation one pager is great, but it only tells you how money gets to the school. It doesn't then tell you what the school uses the money for.
Okay, understood.
Right? And so I, but that's a real problem that we need to fix. And so I think you, you're already giving me more, I wish it wasn't already processed or being printed.
Alright.
Want to change it a little bit based on your feedback, but we'll change it for the final version.
I, I, yeah, sorry.
No, it's great.
Just to make sure.
Keep giving the feedback.
Just to make sure you answered my question. So right now in their budget, there is money allocated for the, the teachers that would run the course. But are there any other uh, budget items related to the course other than staff? That we need? If so, is it not on our, the school's budget? Is it with uh, Joel's cabinet? That's where I'm trying to like get the full picture outside of the teaching, the teacher positions, I guess.
Yeah, so the, the teaching positions um, are on the school budget. And then I think as part of our investment in supporting multilingual learners, there are also funds to support professional development. And curriculum design in the budget of the Office of Multilingual.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, that makes a lot more sense since the department is helping with creating the design, implementing them and all of that. So the schools actually don't have to carry on that particular money in their budget. Alright, uh, I'll stop here and that my colleagues take some time if we have an opportunity for rounds or have much more questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Alkins?
Um, thank you for this um, preliminary presentation. A bunch of questions and I'm trying to figure out how to pace myself in this. So I think my first question is related to the service mapping. And we heard a little bit about it, but I'm curious as to um, how many schools. We are, we have currently implemented service mapping in across the district. And particularly, um, what has been? The, what has been the, the, the return on perhaps like professional development that teachers are getting back as a result of these things? Um, like how are, how are we hearing um, in terms of the implementation aspect of it, how teachers are receiving this? That's my first question.
Frank, do you want to start and?
Yeah.
Give a jump in?
Thank you. Yeah, so I'll start. So um, to begin with, we introduced formally the service mapping work in December. At an all leader PD so that we can ensure that all of our schools had the opportunity. Uh, to walk through the process of service mapping, to look at some examples, to look at some student profiles. Um, profiles similar to what we presented tonight. To give folks a, a foundational understanding and to also give some thought to some of the work that they were already doing. Um, in pockets that was, had been less formalized through, than uh, a district process. So with that, all of our schools across Boston. Had then the opportunity to go back and service map at their schools and start working with their teams. And thinking about ways they can then start to build out their instructional groupings. And look at their building base resources and use that information to inform their practices. First is they were going into their budget hearings and their budget processes. But additionally, then work with their IPT teams and work with their individual school-based teams and grade level teams. To be able to just have discussions about, so, so what does this mean for our kids? So which instructional groupings make sense for our students? Um, which pairings do we currently have of students that make a lot of sense? Where are the groups that we have and are there changes that we need to make? And from that, to be able to just really think about the critical questions similar to what you're asking about what's next? Is there certain things that we're missing? Is there certain things that we feel like we need to advocate for? Is there professional learning that we want to engage in? So at the individual school level, all of the schools are then how having those conversations. Both going into the budget process and beyond to just really think about, you know, a lot of those groups. Because oftentimes you can look at a group of students who may have a similar profile. And based on their profile, you could say, well, these groups, because they all present with similar needs, they could be grouped together. But it's that collective efficacy of our experts to say, but there's a reason why we have these kids. In the certain groupings that they're already in. And sometimes it might make sense to do some combination of that and sometimes it might make sense to do some movement with that. And so really what it's doing is it's creating an opportunity for dialogue. And I think part of the answer to your question comes to those dialogues. That the schools are now having on a regular basis to talk about what does that mean for us? And, and also too, when I think about the, both the size of groupings and also the number of groupings that I have. And you know, one of the things that you will see when you start to service map a school is you start to see trends. Well, it's really two things. It's trends, but you also start to see outliers. And so if you can see clear areas that become a focal point, then you can also use that information. To be able to build out a more thoughtful and fruitful plan. So that's the process right now that we're all going through. And then having continuous dialogue to think about how does that work move forward?
Right. So, so I think the other piece of that question was around. Understanding if the process has been implemented enough to the point where. We're actually seeing it reflected in what this current budget is, 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 is reporting, right? Or if this is something that we'll see more of an effect on in next year's budget. So I think it's also partially that.
Yeah, what I'll say is um, service mapping is reflected in the budget in two ways. The first, as Carleen and Caitlin men- mentioned earlier, for those school leaders who have been doing this work to some extent already. They were able to sort of bring service mapping right into the meetings. So Carleen described this one, two, three step process that she went through in her collab. Um, and it's wonderful that was how she experienced it. And it was really in large part because of her experience and expertise that she was able to experience it that way. That she was able to come to her collab with a, a detailed sense of her needs. But it's been, it's only been two months since we rolled it out. And so some of our schools are still going through that coaching process of developing their service maps. And that's why we built the review process that Serena mentioned. So school like Carleen's, like she came, she did her service map in the collab, we signed off, everyone's happy, she walks out the door, she's done. Other schools, they came to their collab and what was really clear was they weren't done with their service map. They weren't ready yet to adjust their budget. So we did the best they could to build a budget that met their needs, right? And we did some service mapping live in the room. But a number of them then needed follow-up conversation. And some of those follow, follow-up conversations have then resulted in requests for additional funding. Because it turns out when we got deeper, it, it was missed. And so that's what we're doing right now. And then the best part of it is, I don't think there's a week goes, that goes by where Frank isn't talking to somebody about a service map. And then checking in with our team to see if there's additional need. Frank, I don't think we've had one of those weeks yet. Um, and so Frank is a part of these meetings where every couple of weeks, at the very least. We're reviewing the newest service mapping data that people are bringing to us. The assistant directors and special education who work with Frank are identifying needs that are coming up in their regions, right? And we're going to, we have resources set aside and dedicated to go out as soon as those needs are verified. Yeah, thank you, David. And if I maybe, I'll just briefly add those resources there. Definitely I have a lot of conversations with David about the uh, the budgetary resources, but also too with teaching and learning. Because there's a lot of schools that are, that are coming and saying. We've through service mapping are identifying that we have certain professional development needs or certain instructional needs or certain curriculum things that we're thinking about. And it's becoming really clear to us by mapping all of this out and then we're able to think about those resources as well.
Thank you. Um, and um, another question that I have, I think is. I think in the same uh, vein as what we heard member um, Ms. Lima Barbosa talk about. And except this is a little bit related to, this is more related to multilingual learners. And so if I'm just cherry picking, so to speak, looking at the, the budget that we do have. I've looked at some of the, the, the staffing that I see available for multilingual learners and it. And it kind of seems like we're, we are, we're, we're, we're cutting down, at least if I'm looking at teachers. If I'm interpreting it correctly, so I just want to make sure that it's not a disinvestment. Um, within um, like multilingual learners and sort of the, those positions. But if it's a reallocation somewhere else, I, I just would like a little bit of clarity, like on that. And, and for context, I'm looking at the um, the Excel spreadsheet, but specifically open out for uh, ELLs. So that's how I'm, I'm, I'm combing through some of this.
Yes, um, thank you so much for that question. So we had a coding methodology in finance historically. That said, all of the te- all of the teaching positions in our BPS SCI programs. Were coded as multilingual or bilingual teachers. Even if the teachers weren't multilingual or bilingual themselves. And if they, even if they were teaching entirely in English as part of the BPS SCI model that was historically there. So as we roll out this new me- uh, mechanism for multilingual education. We are eliminating that old program coding. So we're, and replacing it with our new multi- purely multilingual programs that really are multilingual. And are, you know, requiring more multilingual staff. And so as a result, a number of teachers who have legacy been coded as multilingual are having their positions switched. Either to be general education positions or uh, special education positions as the case may be, right? Whether they're doing, working in inclusive ed or in, in general ed. And what we are seeing then is you're seeing a decrease in positions that are coded as multilingual as that legacy model moves away. But an increase in the number of positions that are truly multilingual. And unfortunately, our financial coding framework doesn't have a great way of accounting for that. And so we're working on our best to figure out how to explain that change.
Right. And I would just say that this is really important because as the questions come up about being able to track. Uh, teachers who are bilingual educators that are bilingual and, 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 and teaching in multilingual programs. It's really important that we have that information. So it's necessitated moving away from legacy and toward the new coding.
Is that the same for like the support? So if I look at AIDS, for example, is that the same, like, is that the same rationale or?
Yes, it would be a very similar rationale. There are, you know, some limited cases where a position might be getting deleted. Uh, for example, if they were at one of the schools that closed, I know the Frederick, for example, had a number of multilingual AIDS and those positions were closed. But as the, the programs change, the aid positions are also recoded along with the program.
Okay, uh, no, no, thank you. Um, thank you for that and um. I'll, I'll, I'll come back in a, in a second round. Thank you.
First, I'd like to start by saying thank you for your presentation. Now, unlike us, just like in regards to your, to the investments you got, you guys have made. And I was just like wondering what data you guys are going to use to update the, to update these investments in the future? And if you guys are going to be communicating with, communicating with schools and students and fam- and families to. Just make any changes to them and see like how maybe you can improve, maybe any changes needed, any changes needed to them.
Um, thank you so much for that question and I'll give you a, a, the quickest two-part answer I can. The first is that um, our budgets are li- living uh, documents. And so as um, school communities and families raise issues and provide feedback. We are always trying to make adjustments uh, to the budget based on student need. The second thing is um, we're sort of always taking feedback on the budgets that are upcoming. So one of the things that we try and do through this process is both take feedback on the current budget that's before you. But also really use this as an opportunity to create the first round of feedback for next year's budget. So there are some things you may ask of us or push us to do that we're not able to do for this upcoming year. But we're able to say, okay, let's put that on the list for FY twenty seven. And so I know we've had a number of conversations and I'm, I'm working on this idea of how can we collect more student voice early in our budget process? And while we might not be able to revamp what we've already done for school year twenty-five, twenty-six planning. I'm sort of optimistic about our early plans for school year twenty-six, twenty-seven planning. And so I think that's really our approach for now.
Uh, another question. I know you guys mentioned communicating with school site councils. I just wanted to see if you guys, like how specifically school site councils have helped with, have, have. What changes they have made to the, to this year's school, to this year's budgeting and like any examples of what you guys have heard from them?
Might be interesting if either Caitlin or Carleen would just like to share their experience working with their school site council.
Sure, I'm sorry. I can't, I couldn't see if Carleen was about to talk, so I, I can start. Um, so um, I think this year was um. In the context of the, especially of the service mapping, we worked both with our inclusion planning team and our school site council. Um, and so it's, uh, you know, there's some set meeting times where we meet together and um, we share with them the preliminary. Uh, the budget numbers and then um, we're able to, we actually did like a combination meeting with our IPT and our school site council to kind of go through. This is what we're seeing as the needs for this upcoming school year. Here are the allocations. Um, and so how do we want to sort of best address this? And so um, I think this year we e- engaged the school site councils in the normal way. But we had a sort of an additional tool to kind of think through. Have we chosen the right positions and the, the right investments with our budget? I don't know if that helps.
Uh, that helped. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's right. We've, we've put just a, a big effort into um, working with him, family and community advancement. To make sure that school site councils um, are working and school leaders are working with uh, IPTs. To be able to lay out the resources and anytime priority shift within the district um, that would impact. Um, that would impact how school resources need to be used. That's something that's shared during that school site council process is they begin the budget on here. So this, you're right, the school site council is a critical link in the budget process.
Thank you.
Wouldn't hear any Jerry, you you.
Sorry, Mr. Tran.
Yeah. Is it, so it's my turn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. Similar to all my uh, uh colleagues who went before me. Thank you for a very thorough um presentation of the uh. The proposed budget. And um, individually from, from, from me. Thank you for setting aside additional investment into. Uh, ESL students as well as students with disability. Uh, I do have certain questions arising out of my uh. Legal concerns. Service mapping. The way, the way that I under- understand right now is uh. What we are doing is to use the service mapping. In order to devise. A new way of accommodating students with disability that the the ESL students and. And the look act had already been raised by member Rafael Polanco Garcia. I share that as well. But I'm 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 now looking at. These, the particular, the particular groups of students with disabilities. So. The uh service mapping, as I said. So far, what you have explained to us and present and presented to us. I consider it a new way of ad- identifying other kind of reasonable accommodations. In order to provide students with disabilities. Certain um, in, you know, inclusive times aside from their, their. You know, the the times that they are required to be. Uh, uh, that, that, that they, they, they are provided under ADA, uh, IDEA, what? Section five oh four. Okay, so I, the question I have. A multi-pronged, first of all. Providing, devising this, this plan with accommodation and inclusion. Have you? Involved input first from the parents? Any kind of con- con- uh consent from the parents? Second, have you also involved input from? You know, the sub pack on disability, the, you know, groups of parents who. Who are pretty much professional. Expert, who ha- ha- who have professional expertise in issues dealing with students with disability. Um, do you or the school? Devise this mapping all by yourself or with? Those inputs from the groups that I just mentioned? Or in addition to that, any other professional groups to ensure that. All those uh laws IDEA, ADA, section five oh four are somehow not going to be challenged. At a later, you know, subsequently at a later date by parents or 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 by any other interested groups. Um. Before committing to implementing the service mapping. Was there any legal su- support from, you know, your own legal staff or the city legal department? Um. The concern is, maybe it's uh, maybe it's too far-fetched, but. The reason I raise this because I I I I kind of foresee it may rise up to that. That, that, you know, that level of of legal challenges based on. The different uh understandings and 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 um. Interpretation of the law. So that that's why. Uh, I was wondering whether. There are supports for this. Also. Do you have? Backup evidence showing that students with disability under the. The, 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 the new service mapping with uh, you know, with uh inclusion. Um, time. Are now. Uh, more successful in terms of grade. That or in terms of um edu- educational attainment. As opposed to when they were not in the inclusion practice. I'm sorry, I, you know, I have a series of questions that I was trying to pose, you know, to pose there. So I, that's all I. You know, that, that's the concern. Thank you.
So I think there's probably a couple of people that can um chime in here. I think Frank, you can maybe talk about. Um, Member Tron's questions about the legality. Ensuring that we're following IEPs, we're following five oh four guidance, uh, we're following um student minutes in terms of. Uh, uh ESL service uh through the service mapping. Um, and then on the parent side, um, how that input would come in relative to the IEP itself. Which then gets reflected by the service map. Um, and so it's probably a combination of you and Joel and maybe Linda on this.
Sure, yeah, I'll start. Um, thank you very much for your question. I think the, the legal side of it isn't particularly important. Something that I, that I often think and say in s- in special education in particular. Is that special education begins with the law and ends with children. And what I mean by that is that we have to start by looking at the regulations. And making sure that we're considering the regulatory guidance. And then call on our expertise to think about what do students need? What does that ultimately mean for them? Um, how do we access, you know, the input of our teaching experts, of our families to make sure that we're maximizing our potential? So the first thing that I want to cite is Massachusetts CMR twenty-eight oh six. Is the specific Massachusetts regulations on instructional groupings. And the ideas around service mapping is built on the premise of instructional groupings. So just in general context. Every three years, school districts go through a process of review with the Department of Education and one of the. Data points that they always ask for is information relative to instructional groupings. So the idea about thinking about thoughtful groupings is something that is a common practice in the Commonwealth. And as we introduced the ideas of service mapping. We did make sure that we looked at two very important things and introduced this. In writing to all of our school leaders. First was a full understanding of that specific Massachusetts regulation. About instructional groupings to make sure that we are compliant and being thoughtful about our students with disabilities.
I'm sorry, including the check. What, what's the, the, the CMR again?
Twenty-eight zero six.
Thank you.
The se- you bet. The second part is thinking about the DOJ guidance from our OMME partners so that we can be thoughtful about. Our students who have second language learner needs. So when we think about how we develop an instructional group in a service map. We look at both the profiles of learners with disabilities. And we look at their level of needs relative to second language instruction. So that we can make sure that we're being thoughtful about our groups that are addressing both areas. So all of this work is been very consistent with some of the expectations here in Massachusetts. We've made sure that we've um taken the time to be really thoughtful. About the requirements of instructional groupings and why this work is important. And also how it aligns with the data points that we're working on with the Department of Education. And with our OMME partners, with the Department of Justice, so that we can be very thoughtful about that part of the work. Because that part is really critical before we're gonna move forward and really be thoughtful about what does this mean for our students.
Is there any other uh comment? Cause so far I haven't heard anything regarding input from parents and and legal uh input. What you have just uh relayed to me on section uh twenty-eight oh six. It's a, it's a standard CMR. In terms of providing reasonable accommodation for students with disability, doesn't mean, mean anything regarding. The, the, the grouping right now, I, 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 I. Admit to you, I haven't read the whole thing. I will. But my concern is, was there any consent sought from parents? Was there any legal support? Sought from legal department? Is there any support showing? That students uh that with disability who are now in the inclusion program. Fair better? Than when they were. They, they, they were placed in separate setting.
Right. So I think, do you mind if um, I think uh, maybe if Caitlin. Um, wants to just jump in and explain on the school side how it works? Um, because I think the, th- this is really just ensuring um that. What is legally bound in the IEP and what's legally bound in the language plan is happening. Right? It's actually like an extra way to assure that. So the parent feedback's happening in those meetings around the service piece. So for instance, uh, that's where a student for inclusion uh would be recommended is at the team meeting for the IEP. Um, but Caitlin, do you want to just talk about your process like with the school?
Yeah, so um, the, the service.
Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Um, I, it's, it, I think it sounds like something um. Maybe more complicated than what we're doing at the school level. And so what we're doing is we're taking a report that already exists in Ed Plan. Um, which is where all of the data lives for our students with disabilities. And this is the normal report as school leaders and registrars and school counselors. We look at this every single year. When we're building out the schedule to make sure that each student is scheduled appropriately based on their IEP. Which was developed in collaboration with their parents, with everyone at the team. And so the basis of service mapping, it, it is literally a report. From the IEP. And so we're just taking that all in one space. And instead of school leaders waiting until the spring, when we're building the schedule and inputting individual student schedules. Or sort of um making sort of um general educated guesses about, well, if we have this many students. With an R one or R two code, we probably need this many teachers. We're taking that now as we go into our budget and saying, okay, I see I have this many students in the ninth grade who need math services. Do I have enough teachers on my staff to meet these services? So we're not changing their services. Um, we're just looking at them in a more holistic way. Um, and then the conversations that folks are having because. Because we're asking everyone to do this now and, and also I would say because of the new IEP process, there are, there is. Significantly more investment and interest across the entire school community, whether you're a special educator or not about. Like, okay, well, so what does this mean? Um, and as Superintendent said at the beginning of the call. We're all definitely seeing the level of need rising in our student population. And so this tool, the service mapping tool. Um, is helping to bring more people into the conversation, but it, it's really just taking the, the. Um, the grid from the IEP, which is the document that was developed with the parents. And allowing school-based teams to sit down together and say, okay, these are all the students in the ninth grade who have reading services. Um, what's the most effective way to group these students? And so. We bring in, um, you know, certainly like our, if, as we know the students, you know, what's gonna be the, the, the best groupings? And then we're constantly communicating with parents, sort of like, you know, as things come up and checking their progress and checking. In, in the same way through the IEP process, the way we do um progress monitoring in that context. But it's really just taking something, uh, uh, something, a report we already have and making it more accessible for schools. And then also requiring that all school leaders engage their teams in a conversation about this. So that it's not something that's siloed with like a special ed director or special ed staff. It becomes sort of something that is the whole community is thinking about.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Alkins.
Oh, I wanted to give deference to you, Chair, and you, Vice Chair, if you all had questions for our first round before I went.
Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Dr. Alkins. Uh, yes, Chair, I do. So. Like to start up a little bit at a higher level, and this is probably for Mr. Bloom and and maybe a little bit for Dr. Vincente as well. Um. You know, Mr. Bloom, you talked about the move from weighted student funding to service mapping. And I understand it and appreciate it. I do remember, or, you know, as a basis for funding, right? I do remember vividly when we first moved to weighted student funding. What it exposed was a lot of inequities in our district. Um. Quite frankly, there was favoritism, right? Just the schools and school leaders that knew to push. Made it happen. And over the years, we saw a lot of inequities that weighted student funding exposed. And it took a number of years to move back. So talk to me about. Any concerns about service ma- service mapping as a basis for funding? And is there the potential for inequities to creep back into the system?
Um, I really appreciate that question uh by Sir O'Neil, and I think. It's an important thing we consider because. Um, there is always, even with ways during funding, right? There's always the potential for inequities to creep back into the system, and it's something we have to be very vigilant for. And so I think. One of the things that Frank and his team have been spending a lot of their time. Doing over the last few months as we've been rolling out this service mapping is being really clear with. What are the data about student need that we are using to make decisions? And so it isn't, um. You know, well, my service mapping says two point O and your service mapping says two point four, so. Uh, you know, you, you need more, you get more than me or whatever it is, it's. It's, okay, we've looked at the, we've broken down the need of students on IEPs. We've put all those needs together, right? We are looking at the specific data about their STD levels if they're a multilingual learner, right? And then we're applying some standard rules for what level of service that requires. Um, and I think the, the nice thing about that. Compared to weighted student funding has been. In weighted student funding, we would always have this awkward moment in the budget process. Where people would come and explain, this is the student need that isn't being met in my school. But it would always be very narrative and there would be this pressure to. Um, support those schools, right, who came to say this is why ways to funding isn't working for us. And we would always try and identify. Rules-based ways and data to. Uh, ensure we were making a change. So if we were making a change in ways during funding, we would say, okay. If ways during funding didn't work for this school, let's go back and identify every school in the same position and adjust their budget as well. I think the thing I appreciate about this new approach is A. It's not a finance approach. It's a district-wide approach in collaboration with academics and multiple departments. And B, the data we're using has been very upfront. Right? We actually explained to school leaders right at the beginning of the process. Here's the data we're gonna be using to review. Here's exactly how we're gonna be doing the reviews. Here's some examples. The schedules you saw earlier today were actually. Here's some examples, the schedules you saw earlier today were actually presented to school leaders at their P D. And then Frank and his team have been doing a lot of norming on how do we ensure that, you know, we're treating schools the same way?
Vice Chair, I would just add also that um. The service mapping piece, we tried to just illuminate as an example of a tool. That we're using to be more precise and ensure that we can do that double check to make sure. Uh, schools have the resources that they need because now we're actually attaching it to how the services would be delivered. And so I would not, um, I can understand how that connection is being made, but like. It is not a replacement for weighted student funding, right? Not an allocation methodology, it's really more of a tool that we all, um, because we want to be upfront with school leaders. Like when we're trying to, like, this is a tool we're gonna try, we're gonna use to check. So you should just have it in advance so that um you have the same, we're we're being very transparent about how we're checking to make sure. You indeed have the services that the the resources that you need.
Yeah, Dr. Chen, thank you. That's a great clarification, right? That it's not a direct replacement, it's an evolution and it's a tool. That is included in the toolbox, so to speak. Is that a better way to think of it?
Right, it's not an allocation methodology.
Exactly. Great, thank you. Um, it it does bring up. And and uh, Mr. Bloom, you talked about this and uh, it was mentioned earlier by Ms. LaRocque about the. Review process, appeal process, whatever you wanna call it. Where um, schools get to file a Google form. And lay out some findings and and ask for. Reviews which are being done by the regionals, finance, et cetera. I'm curious how many schools filed and asked for a review?
So we got thirty eight filings. Representing just over thirty schools because there were some duplicates of Rose. Uh, one of the interesting things and I um, I think Carlene alluded to this earlier in a way. Is that some of our school leaders didn't quite trust that the process was gonna work. Um, and so we have a number of them, now we haven't quite finished our review yet. Where the actual finding is no longer needed because it was funded as part of the process. Where they sort of, they actually were really fast on doing their service mapping and they said, okay, here's what I need and they filled out the form. Because they had some fear that they weren't gonna get the resource. And then we fit, by the time we actually finished their budget process, they were like, oh. Okay, we're fine, right? Um, so I think we're gonna end up something around the range of twenty five to thirty. Real reviews, right? So I would say probably about twenty percent, twenty, twenty-five percent of schools will submit something. But and those reviews are not all related to inclusive ed. The majority of them are, but there were a number of other things. So um, we have schools that want us to review the enrollment counts we use for social work allocations. Because they feel like we missed something in our data and their data is showing something different. Or we have schools that um have a specific funding need related to a program. That was temporarily funded by a grant that they're asking for some additional funding for. And so of the probably twenty five to thirty um, schools that filed something, I would say. It's probably more like fifteen to twenty that are directly related to inclusive education and multilingual education. And the remaining ten are about sort of a variety of other smaller topics. Um, that we still encourage schools to file about and are are giving us the opportunity to double check. Our math and make sure that we're, we didn't miss anything in the review.
You know, um, Neil deGrasse Tyson tells this famous story about when he was in art class at Harvard. And he spent a week being told to paint oranges that were in a bowl. And then the second week, the art teacher told him, now paint the space between the circles. And he uses that as a metaphor to not only look at what's in front of you, but think about what you're not seeing. And so when I hear thirty schools file reviews, I think about the other schools. And the ones that either the school leaders are not trained enough in service mapping. Or still new, as you talked about versus the highly experienced school leaders and. Um, you know, that have spoken tonight and I'll tell us that in a minute. And also the ones that say, yeah, no, this budget looks good to us, we're fine. Hmm, why are they saying that? So um, just make sure to think through, you know, looking at the spaces beside the circle, so to speak. Why are some people not filing reviews? Are they afraid to do it? Are they, they don't trust the district that it's gonna be treated appropriately? Is their budget even more favorable than they needed and don't want to double look at it? So again, I just want to make sure we're equitable to all of our schools. I I want to move on to um our head of school, uh Murphy and Principal Pignato, both of whom are. Fantastic, you um bring so much to the table, really appreciate your presentations tonight. And um, I personally always learn when I've, when I've spent time with each of you. Um, Principal Pignato, when you talked about, you know, the old phase one of we're not comply, oh, we met compliance. And now that's gone as we move into phase two and three, that was really, really powerful for me. Because that's a mind shift for the district. You know, and many times in the past, the bar has been, well, we have to move compliance. And yet that should be table stakes, that should be the bare minimum now. And so um Superintendent, I applaud that the thinking is moving beyond that. I I think that's critical. I do want to ask um, if if Principal Pignato was and and uh head of school Murphy is still with us. I'm curious your thoughts about, you know, how fellow school leaders feel about filing for reviews. And you know, the trust they have in that process as we just talked about.
Sure, um, I I I mean, my experience of us is as a group is we're not particularly shy about raising our concerns. Um, and I will say, we do also, there is also a structure, a couple of structures that I think support folks. Um, who, as you said, you know, the more that you do this, the more that you understand how things work. And the more comfortable you feel knowing who to call or who to talk to. But um, the return to a regional structure, I think, really supports. Folks in being able to know who to advocate with or who to talk to or or should I file this? Um, newer school leaders also have mentors who are more experienced principals. And um, I'm a principal mentor and one of the things, so the folks who are mentors, we meet together. And one of the specific asks was for us to go and talk with our uh, the newer principals specifically to sit down with them. Um, side by side and kind of go through their budget and any questions. And so I think for the newer folks, um, there there is that that structure there. And then, of course, there is school leader cabinet, um, where, which is sort of the way by regions, there's a representative. Um, who can sort of bring concerns to the leadership team. And so I think through that, through those several mechanisms, there are ways for folks who might not feel comfortable raising their hand. To know that there are these other resources. And um, I think at the budget P D this year, we went pretty carefully through the the sort of um different avenues. Um, but again, like you said, um, certainly the more experienced folks are gonna know how to do that right away. But I I do think we have the sort of safeguards of these other smaller group structures where you could um feel comfortable saying. How do I ask for this if I'm not sure?
That's really helpful, thank you. And and thank you for the mentoring that you're doing to other school leaders as well. I hope they all learn your excellent set of attention to detail and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Oh, um. Um, I do, uh, Mr. Bloom, I do look forward and I think this will probably be more in the in the central presentation. You talked about finding out about some of those cuts that are made and how they're being reallocated. But you you alluded to the fact that that would be talked about in the central budget. So I'll leave it since we're on schools with one final point. And and this really comes from being out visiting. Some of our newly built schools and some of our schools under construction. So the new Carter School that's under construction, the new Josiah Quincy School. Um, Boston Arts Academy, even the Dearborn. We are now building highly complex uh buildings with incredible um infrastructures. Around technology, around um H V A C systems, all the utilities, et cetera. And there are many skyscrapers, quite frankly, uh, many of them computer generated. And I think it really brings to bear that we may need to have different supports. For the infrastructure of those buildings and some of our more traditional buildings. And so I want to make sure that, you know, I I think about the fact that like Mass Maritime, you know, as a facilities management program. And a lot of their engineers end up as the engineers in Boston skyscrapers. And it, you know, I I want to make sure we're leaving space in the budget for these new buildings we have and that are coming online, they're gonna be building. And that we're thinking in terms of including in the budget. Um, you know, folks that can handle that very technical infrastructure. Um, and number one, and number two, that we are providing in the budget. And I know Superintendent, you did it last year for the Carter School. But we're gonna have to work at Ruth Batson coming on and and a bunch of other schools we're gonna be building now. That we're planning in the budget. Support for the school-based budgets that they can do the planning on how their school is gonna be very different.
Yeah.
So I Superintendent, I see you nodding no way at this, so.
Yeah, no, I think these are excellent. These are excellent um points and questions, right? I think we work closely with um with P F D on the city side when it comes to the management and the technology of the buildings. Um, but Brian Ford uh and Sam have built into their shop capacity that has kind of this increased awareness of the technology and understanding of. Um, you know, the ventilation systems and so forth. A lot of that stuff gets managed remotely. Um, but there is capacity that's built in each year as new buildings come on. Um, at the school level, I think it's a really interesting point because I think there's kind of a couple places where a school leader capacity is needed. Um, one is certainly when we're undertaking a large project. Uh, the school leader can't necessarily run the school and the project at the same time and be there. So um, we have in each of these cases created some backfill and support and we'll continue to do that. I think the other place that we're also sort of learning about it is that as schools go through. Um, whether it's uh mergers um or relocations into new builds. Um, there's also the leader support around working with the community, working on communication. So there's a whole adaptive side that also has to be addressed. And so we will be building in uh or we've built into this budget some additional capacity to be able to support leaders going through those transitions.
Yeah, I mean, I look at Shaw Taylor, I look at Ruth Batson, I look at what's proposed on the table, you know, for clap, et cetera.
That's right.
And I just want to make sure that that is being built into the budget.
Great.
Not only the hard cost, but also, you know, having the right support at the school level to be able to do that plan.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's interesting because things like the the ventilation in the room temperatures, like those are all now. Managed remotely, we can see into every classroom. Uh, and so and and it's all set up so that we can get alarms when something goes out of range. Uh, the technology is just evolving so much, A I is evolving so much with this. So it really is an interesting area. Uh, and you're right, these buildings, the level of technology in them is um just over. One build that might have happened a decade ago versus a build that's happening today are just night and day. So we have to stay.
You need to build an engineer or building.
Exactly, we have to stay current.
Which is kept from our custodial staff.
Exactly, exactly. And and um, and Chief Ford has been building that capacity within his shop.
Great, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I do have a few questions and I know we want to do another round and we have public comments. So I just want to let, remind everybody, we're already now at eight o'clock. So we need to um pick up our pace a little bit. Um, um, thank you again, um, David for the um, and your team for all of the hard work in getting us to this place. I wanted to go back and you you say when when you begin with schools, you 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 go back to their baseline budgets. And I wanted to find out a little bit more about the baseline budgets themselves. Are they adequate? I mean, how do we evaluate them as we're telling the school, this is your starting point? Is there review process to understand how the past year is gone? What comprises that baseline budget? And how may temporary um grants also impact that is part of that school's um allocations?
Um, yeah, thank you for that question, Chair. I think. We're, we we continue to start from this basic principle of. We want to invest in the schools that need it the most, but not by taking away from schools. Other schools that maybe have a little more. I think um, I remember a meeting I was with some school leaders a few years ago where they were sort of talking about an inequity that was in the system at the time that we've since rectified. And um, I was saying to them, you know, in this budget. The only thing we could do about it with the amount of money we have is to take the money away from the schools that have more for next year. That's like, we can't afford to raise everyone up to that level in this year's budget. And the thing they were saying is, no, you know, the approach we're asking for, even as the schools are underfunded relative, right? Is not that, but to say, let's hold those schools flat, right? And bring up those schools that are relatively underfunded. And so when you look at our inclusive education methodology that's before you tonight. One of the things you'll notice is we assigned a funding target for every school. Rather than just saying, here's your dollar per pupil, you're, everybody's getting this amount more. We said, we want every school to meet this per pupil target for this particular impacted student community. So this fo- this target per student with disabilities. And then we measured where were the schools against the target? So the schools that were closer to the target received less money, less new money, because they already had a lot of the resources in their school. And schools that might have been historically slightly underfunded, right? Received a differential per pupil amount to get them up to that target. So it was both differentiated by the number of students with of need you served. And by the per pupil allocation you historically had for those students. I think that's how we're trying to approach that challenge.
Okay. Um, I also noticed that in some of the budgets, there's still a hold harmless line item. Um, as we are moving towards any number of changes within our schools and. You know, how how is that still happening? And where specifically are those dollars focused within a school's budget?
Um, yes, thank you so much for that. So. Um. The hold harmless dollars are a reflection of our commitment to not reduce the non-instructional core instructional staff in schools. And so effectively, a school having hold harmless dollars. Means that weighted student funding would have indicated they should have had less of the non-instructional resources in that school. Um, we have been struggling over the course of this year to determine whether it's useful to keep that description of the money in there. Or whether we just sort of eliminate it now that it's a part of the. Um, sort of baseline budget that every school received at the start of the process. And I think we determined for this year, it was useful to leave it in. To continue to communicate part of the challenge and reason we needed to move away from weighted student funding. I think. Every summer, we're continuing to talk to the community and and do more research to determine, okay, when is the right year? To try and fully revamp the system, fully revamp our finance language, get rid of all these old terms. And fully reflect a new terminology. And I think what we've decided for now in partnership with many other departments and stakeholders is. While we're doing this work focused on inclusive education and the way we're providing service delivery to students. We don't want to muddle the issue by then changing all of our finance language, which while important. The language itself doesn't necessarily impact students. And so we're keeping some of this legacy language to try and. Be clear with what money's in schools without sort of taking away from the more important work that's happening in the academics. And I think each summer, we're trying to gauge, okay, is this the? And I think each summer, we're trying to gauge, okay, is this the year? Is this the year we make the switch? And so this, this upcoming summer, we'll be, we'll be working through that process again to determine if next cycle is the year. We sort of change our finance language and categories for this new strategy.
Okay. Um, next question is regarding some of the work we're doing in inclusion. And I'm beginning to understand how we're trying to look at our class, our general, our regular classroom. But the question is, how are we looking at the? Inclusion support needed for all of the specialist areas? The art, the music, et cetera, particularly those, those. Um, areas which makes a big difference in a child's school experience. But sometimes um, those classes have not been able to happen because there wasn't the right support. In them, so how are we looking at this as we are building out? Our, you know, inclusion models, continuing to grow them in our schools?
Good Chair, um, thank you for that question because that's so important. Um, and we know our students will do better when they have access to those resources. The service mapping helped us to make sure that the individual services are provided alongside the, the tier one instruction. And now what we did, for instance, today with all school leaders is moved on to the actual scheduling. And the scheduling will include all the specials and electives and so forth to ensure. That schools have that, all the resources and have that mapped out as well.
So there will be supports for those educators as well when those students are part of their program?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, the last question I want to ask tonight is, you know, you were talking about um. With the changes that are being made, there are sometimes change to the coding of a particular job. So the question is, you know. We're changing coatings, what does that mean about the particular skills of educators? The licenses as well as the job descriptions, because it feels like just changing a code. Um, seems to trickle down any number of other kinds of issues that needed to be addressed. And how are those looked at as we're? You know, shifting how we are staffing our classrooms?
So um, I really appreciate that, if for no other reason than it gets, gives me an opportunity to talk about the technical side of some of the work we do. Which is a lot of what I live day to day. Um, in our budget collaborative meetings, in addition to reviewing student need. We review the coding of each position. How it shows up in our financial system. And have an explicit conversation with HR and all of the academic departments in the probable org portion of the meeting. About what changes might have resulted in the licensure requirements for the position. So in some cases, there are very limited changes. Um, in some cases, there are more significant changes, so maybe an additional license is required. In that case where additional licensure is required, that teacher is notified and given the opportunity to. Um, get that license over time, so we know they're not going to have it right away necessarily. And then in that circumstance, we'll provide additional supports to that teacher in, in the intervening period. So the teacher has the time they need to get the professional development and licensure that the position might now require. And the students get the support of additional resources while the teacher is out getting that license. But that's not every time a position is coded, sometimes the, the requirements of the position stay the same. Right, and other times they even might, might lessen.
Uh, my last question, um, I think. Goes back to some of the concerns that both Ms. Plank Garcia and Mr. Tron raised with regard to multilingual learners. And the kinds of programs they can access. Um, and I know, you know, we have talked on this committee forever around. Wanting more opportunities for students to be taught in their native language. And um, we don't have the programming that can do this, where are we in our um? Work with staff, you know, are, are, are numbers of staff who have that ability increasing? To try to keep up with the concern and the desire. To have more um students being able to have more of their instruction provided in their native language. So that's one, and then knowing that there are probably. A half a dozen critical languages that we do a lot of um, translation in, in, in instruction in. What do we do for the other fifty plus languages that our children are speaking? That don't have enough to have a particular class, et cetera? And how do we assess their? Their language, English language development as well, that's a group that we rarely ever talk about in terms of. Um, how we're looking at all of the ELL, multilingual learning and special ed, um, you know, inclusion programming.
Here, I can be, oh, sorry.
Well, go ahead, Linda.
I can begin and Joel certainly can add in, um. But I think what we've done in the last year is added more bilingual programs than we have in the past. And I just want to be very clear that in these bilingual programs, these are research based programs that have been approved by DESI because. There is a licensed bilingual teacher that is teaching. Like instructing in both languages, which is different from. Which is also important, but very different from native language access that they may get as a way of feeling included and affirmed and supporting. But it's different from actual language of instruction being in their native language. So now we have these bilingual offerings that parents can opt into and choose to send their. Uh, put on their choice form. And then what we are also doing, which I think, and you can tell me if I'm not addressing your question. Is trying to make sure we hire more bilingual staff, whether they are teachers or paras. Or like every aspect of the, the built, school building, right? Our cafeteria staff, bus monitors, bus drivers, every place our students have contact with adults. We want to make sure to the degree possible, we can hire more bilingual staff that provide the support. Which is different from the instruction, I just want to make sure that that's clear for, for the public as well.
Well, I guess in some ways I'm interested in the both and. Those who are able to communicate and those who are actually able to teach, I particularly think about high school students. Who need higher order math or history or other topics actually taught. In this, in their language by a. Person who can teach in the language, not just speak it, so I just. I'm interested in understanding where we are in that process, how much need? Is there that's going unmet and do we have a process of looking at that as part of some of the programming within our budget?
Yeah, thank you so much, um, Dr. Chen for addressing the question. Um, and I also wanted to follow up with, in addition to the structures that Dr. Chen had um described. We also, for. Families and for students resident matriculating into Boston Public Schools. We do understand that we do not always have the language capacity, but we want to create a safe and welcoming nurturing. Environment, so we've also created newcomer programs. Where newcomer programs, the students are not necessarily. Instructed in their language, but it's a structure that provides a welcoming environment. That acclimate students to structures of schooling here. Also is more providing a social emotional support as students um enter. It offers the student to be kind of like a buffer before they um, enter into the uh. With their typical monolingual peers. Um, and the teachers that are there too are instructing the students and have. A lot of experience in terms of language acquisitions for multilingual learners. You also asked about how are we? Assessing our students, so every year our students, all of our multilingual learners have to take the WIDA assessment. And actually, uh, that window is about to close up at the end of the month on the twenty seventh. So every January through February, our multilingual learners are assessed for their link, um, English assessment. Um, and this year too, we also piloted in some schools. The opportunity to do additional progress monitoring, so in lieu of just waiting once a year to assess the students for their language acquisition. Also have opportunities to do more progress monitoring for their language acquisition using the last links. And as we introduce additional newcomer programs, we are able to assess students and create that progress monitoring tool. Um, implement that for our students as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back to Dr. Alkins.
Uh, thank you, and um, thank you for the, some of the responses, because they've. Unpacked a bit of some of my thoughts, so. Um, just from a, a high level, and I'm particularly looking at slide six. In our presentation, um, that just lists out the, the, the new investments, and so a couple of them. With regard to inclusive practices. Um. You, the IPT process, right, which laid out, I think, um, by school, but also. Um, across the district, what each school was looking at for their needs, and so I'm wondering. Um, how much of a variance is there between what we're saying is a new investment and how much? Schools are saying that they actually need across the district, because that would give. Some sense of what the investment is or how we should be weighing it. As we're talking about those things, and I think similar to, similar to that. The bilingual education investment that we are talking about, and I'm particularly interested in. How we should be thinking about the investment here. As it relates to what we're seeing in terms of our students who are coming in. Um, and sort of knowing that we're our growing population of multilingual students, like how are we investing that tracks? With that, and that actually sets up, whether it's through staffing, whether it's through staff support as we just heard, like how? Should we be thinking about weighing more into bilingual education? I don't know if, I think supports are separate from that, but calling those things out, so, yeah.
I think there's a couple of things in this budget that'll help answer that, the question, and. One thing, I, I'll just say, our early review of the responses, so we allocated out. Uh, most of the money from the ten million dollars already and kept some in reserve to meet nuanced school feedback. Our initial review of the feedback we're getting from schools. Right, who mostly met with their IPTs, did their service mapping, right, trying to figure out what they needed. Is that it's gonna, the ten million dollars is gonna be more or less the right amount of money to meet what our schools have been asking for. On, on the multilingual side, I think there's sort of two things you can look at in the budget. The first is what I would call the systematic program investments, so these are things like. Building capacity in Bata East, which I think just opened, right? To meet the needs of, of our multi, our newcomers. It, it may seem like we've been talking about it for so long that it must have already started. But it really is a new thing and it's happening this year, we're expanding it as part of next year's budget. We're expanding the nine new multilingual programs. Um, so that's sort of one place you can see it. I think the second place you can see it is in. Our sort of reserves for future need and our process of reviewing enrollment live. So we have sort of our stable of baseline programs. We have these nine new multilingual programs plus the expansion of Bata East and actually the multilingual program, Ocho Camino at. The Collaborative High School as well. And then we also have a really significant reserve to ensure that. The sort of unknown, unknown of newcomers to the city is there. So um, you know, we don't know, is it going to be Alston Brighton that gets a big spike in newcomers? Is it going to be Hyde Park or Matapan, is it going to be East Boston? And so we need to be nimble enough to respond to those needs when they arrive.
Yeah, and I would just say that we built capacity out specifically in this area over the last two years. Uh, simply because we were seeing the numbers come fast, so there is capacity in the field. But to uh Chief Bloom's point, this is a constant, we're looking at our registrations and we're looking at transfers. Uh, and when we see the need, we have the dollars to trigger the positions.
Thank, thank you, and I mean, similar to that, um, and I'm pretty sure this is going to come with the budget booklet. Um, particularly like the, the, the equity analysis and um, sort of use of the, like the racial equity planning tool. To support, so I'm, I'm curious as to, I guess it would probably be under. That five million line for program in school, uh, like maybe program in school expansions. Looking at what programs might be specifically targeted to support uh, closing of the opportunity and the achievement gaps. Um, so I'm, if, if there is another way that we're going to break that out, uh, Chief Bloom, we talked a little bit about. An argument that all of this could be utilized to say that you're looking to close the opportunity and achievement gap. Um, but a little bit more of a, uh. I'd like to see a little bit more broken out in terms of. The, the programs that might be um, focusing on some specific like um, populations. Or looking at um, the improvement to uh instructional time access that they might, that, that these groups might have access to. That would just sort of help um, get some clarity on those uh, investments. And then also just a, a selfish question around the one million in curriculum materials, wondering. Um, if we've started to invest a little bit in things such as AI literacy for our students. Um, because we know that this is coming, or not even coming, it's here. Um, so I'm just wondering, like, are some of the, digging into some of these investments?
Well, um, okay, that's a, a note for me to have uh. Leslie Ryan Miller on call for our next hearing to talk a little bit more about that and what she's doing in the central office to support academics, um. The curriculum investment in particular is, as we've spent a lot of money centrally to buy new curriculum and high quality instructional materials. The feedback we've heard from the field is that there's a lot of need for the sort of um. Disponables, I always get the word wrong, Dr. Chen, I'm sorry, the.
Yeah.
Consumables?
Consumables, thank you. I cannot get that word to stick in my brain, I apologize, but. What schools have been reporting back to us, it's really great, you're buying us all this curriculum, but then it's putting a strain on our budgets. To buy the consumables, because you didn't uh increase our budgets alongside that. And so as a part of this year's budget, the million dollars is a budget for. Schools to make sure they have the money to buy those consumables along with the new curriculum that Central Office is buying. I think we'll then come back maybe in the central hearing to talk a little bit more about. The work that academics and professional learning as a department is doing to support. Uh, fancy new curriculum stuff like AI, I admit, I just got a presentation on AI for finance departments and. I don't think I've ever felt older in my life, um, but I'm excited to learn more about it.
Well, that's Dr. Chen's uh favorite topic, so maybe she can chime in here real quick.
Sure, um, you, you're absolutely right, there are so many things that are changing every day and part of our investments do include. How we are using technology, that includes AI, um, to better not only support students. But support teachers in their implementation of the HQIM, and there are lots of things that we're working on right now. So that teachers can get that support um, and know exactly where in the HQIM to go to. Implementing new curriculum is always hard. And um, there are some efficiencies, um, I think, think of it as a personal assistant for a teacher who can sort of help them find the. The areas that they need to pay attention to for certain students as quickly as possible, so they can really spend all of their time or most of it. On students themselves and not as much on the planning. Not that planning's not important, but there's, there's some efficiencies.
Nope, thank, thank you for both, and like I said, I look forward to the, the booklet, like when we do get it, um. And hopefully that breakdown, well, that breakdown of um, programs that would, you know, that we're thinking. That are going to be supporting that uh, the opportunity and achievement gaps. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Plank Garcia.
I think Ms. Barbosa is first, I mean.
Either one, whoever would like to go first.
I'll, I'll be quick, uh, thank you, uh. So just in the, in the conversation around. Uh, multilingual, one of my concerns is, is good that we have the monies. But actually hiring the educator that speaks that language to be their ESL student. I'm gonna note again, uh, Dr. Holland, uh, School of Technology. Uh, there's cases of students that are in their ESL one class, but the teacher does. the teacher does not necessarily speak their native language. I know that hiring can play uh, a role here. So as we are making these investments, what are the conversations that we are having with the human capital department that we're ensuring that we're being intentional on the hiring? Like what are the recruitment efforts, right? Because it's Boston. There, there's, there's, there's definitely, uh, someone that is, uh, qualified for these positions. I know salaries sometimes tends to be one of the challenges, but if we're gonna make this work, we have to have the, not only the person with the right licenses, with the experience, but the native language piece is, is definitely the critical piece here. I, I can't, I, I speak English and Creole and I embrace, um, in the ESL one class and the teacher only speaks Spanish. It's not, it doesn't help. There's similarities with Portuguese, I get it. Uh, it won't be as hard. But if we're gonna make this, uh, work, we need to make sure that we're, we're working side by side. And I know you all are, are when you're working on creating the numbers and allocating that money, but putting the right people there is the only way we're gonna see if this proposal, if this plan is actually gonna work and meet our students' needs. So that would be one question and I have something else that has nothing to do with inclusion.
Yeah, so I would just say that, um, we are working, um, in the re, the recruit, recruitment and retention, um, part of OHC to develop pipeline programs, particularly Paris to teachers, um, in the low incident languages. That's something that Joel and her department are working with the communities on, um, both on curriculum development side, but then also on how to be able to recruit from within the community for those that are interested in, in being part of it. Um, but it's really a focus across the organization at every level to try to get as many bilingual and multilingual staff as possible. So part of the ability for us, and actually this was spurred, um, by Ms. Palanca Garcia two years ago was when she was really asking about how can we track this? And so that's really been a lot of the effort of now in the hiring having that identification so that we actually do have a sense of what building capacity is for language. So this is one that we'll report out each year. Uh, it's very important to us. We want to see that growth there. We have seen some good growth year to year. Um, but again, the placement of those educators relevant to the where the students are that speak the languages, that's the other piece that we have to continue to work on.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you noted that it's not just in the classroom, but at every level in terms of staffing. Uh, from the moment they walk into Welcome Center, testing, right, and so they get assigned to a school. Um, I'm gonna change gears here. I wanted to talk about our pools or swimming program for the school facilities that do have that. Dave, can you speak a little bit more on what the investment looks like? It's been such a huge, um, challenge for the district and the city of ensuring that we have pools for our communities. Uh, could you speak on what investments in which schools? Um, and what exactly is going to, to fix? Because there's so many cases of different reasons why these pools were closed in the, in the first place. So if you could speak on that, that would be great.
Yes, it really is a multifaceted investment. So number one priority is get the school up and, get the pool up and running. So it's a value to the community. So almost all of our pools will be up and running by the summer. Um, there are two pools that require more significant capital investment that might take a little bit longer. Step two is investing in school, uh, in school swim programs for them, for those schools. So we, at, at those programs, we think at the very least they need an instructor, a, a swimming paraprofessional in a lifeguard. It's a three-person team um, to manage the pool for safety. So what we are doing is, um, first, we have identified our schools that have existing swim programs that are actively running. So the Mason has a swim program. We're ensuring that they have all the resources they need for that program to operate safely and in aligned with you know, our best efforts on the guidance. And if we're seeing any gaps in those resources, we're allocating more staff to the program. The second thing is we're looking at programs where the pool hasn't been operating during the school day for any number of reasons. Maybe it was undergoing repairs. Maybe there was a school day program. And we're identifying who's ready to start a school program. So, um, we're still in those planning conversations. Um, we'll work to get you a list of which schools are ready very soon. Um, but we think, uh, we're probably gonna have about seven uh, in-school pool programs running and then another six pools that are open for out-of-school time, uh, swim.
Thank you. That's all for me. My other questions were asked already. I appreciate it.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Thank you, Madanchea. Este, esta es la segunda audiencia, verdad? De el presupuesto y aunque han subido muchas preguntas, voy a hacerlo en breve.
So thank you very much. And, uh, this is actually the, sir, the second meeting regarding deep budget. There's been a lot of questions regarding this. So I'm gonna be brief in my questions and my remarks.
Okay. Entonces, eh, escuché a alguien del estado, no recuerdo quién fue exactamente, que dijo que los, porque estos programas para los estudiantes multilingüe eh, están, son los que están aprobados por DESI. Estos son los programas que están aprobados por DESI. En relación a los estudiantes multilingüe y al acceso al idioma nativo.
So with regards, what I heard from someone from staff said that the multilingual programs that are being offered are those uh, programs that had been approved already by this DESI when, with regards to multilingual students. That's what I heard from, I believe, one of the members of the staff.
Pero yo quiero recordar, traer este, a esta audiencia eh, que en el 2017 se aprobó la ley LOOK, como todos recordarán.
As you all may remember, uh, the, back in the year twenty seventeen, this, uh, uh, LOOK law was approved, as you might remember.
Es decir, hace siete años ya, que esta ley le da al distrito la responsabilidad de crear programas flexibles donde se vea el acceso de los, a los estudiantes en su idioma nativo para la alfabetización.
So I have to consider that this law came probably about seven years ago and this particular law attributes the district the responsibility to create the flexibility for these particular programs to provide access to native language. It's been seven years already since this law was implemented.
Entonces, ha sido, eh, una, eh, las, las familias, las comunidades han estado empujando mucho y pidiendo programas donde podamos ver que el idioma nativo, que los estudiantes están siendo alfabetizados en su idioma nativo, que están utilizando su idioma nativo como base y hemos visto lo beneficio de tener el idioma nativo como base.
So having a native language as, as a base, we had seen the benefits. We have heard about the benefits. There has a lot, there's been a lot of pressure from behalf from the families themselves, the community themselves itself pushing for this particular program regarding in native language. When it comes to educating the students and that, we had, uh, heard about the benefits of education of their native language as well, as you know.
Yo soy un, un vivo ejemplo porque mi hijo llegó, cuando llegó a Boston, él fue alfabetizado en inglés. No, no se utilizó su idioma base, su idioma nativo para la alfabetización. Y yo puedo ver la diferencia entre cómo mi hijo habla el inglés y cómo habla el español.
A true example is actually my, uh, example myself when I came here. My son went to school, he was only six years old and he started school, but he was educated, he learned in English, not in Spanish. And I'm able to see the difference in the way he speaks English and the way he speaks Spanish because of this.
Y él no llegó a una escuela bilingüe, lo que significa que fue, él no llegó a una escuela donde tuviera el lenguaje dual. Él habla mejor el inglés que el español.
No, I think it's true that he did not arrive to a bilingual student. He did not arrive to a dual language program. He arrived and he learned in English, not in Spanish, being his native language.
En ese sentido, quiero decir, estar al distrito. Esta es la segunda audiencia del presupuesto. Yo tengo esperanza de que nosotros podamos ver reflejado en el presupuesto esa implementación de ese idioma nativo o las métricas que necesita para implementarse.
It is certainly my hope and that we are, this is the second meeting regarding, or second session regarding uh, the budget. It is certainly my hope that this particular budget reflects the importance of having native language, at least the particular metrics that had to be implemented to reflect this native language as being part of the budget. Certainly, it is my hope that that happens.
Muchas gracias.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, you, what? Was that more of a question or a statement? I, I would like to answer about the LOOK Act. So yes, um, member Palanco Garcia, the LOOK Act was implemented in two thousand seventeen, which was great. And since then, in two thousand seventeen, the dual language program at the Mata Hunt was implemented. And a couple of years later, the Vietnamese program at the Mather was implemented. And then we kind of halted across the district. And last year, we really started to look to see how can we offer families more options as they register their children. And, um, we didn't want it to just be con, like congregated in one area. We wanted for when families come, if you live in Brighton, if you live in Dorchester, if you live in East Boston, that if you come to register your child and if this is a program that you would like to have for your child, that you do have the option to have a, um, dual language program or more multilingual programs, um, for our students who are multilingual. Um, so since then, I, I don't have the number off the top of my head because I don't like calculate all, but we've, with Desi's approval, we've added more programs in the last year than we've had over pretty much, um, the last forty years. And that's really listening to the community, working with school leaders, working with families, working with organizations like Saint Stevens to really listen to hear what families want and looking to see where we had programs that were considered a BPS SEI program and where we can make conversions to actually provide native language instructions for students. Um, so we have those programs that we've implemented. We have newcomer programs where we implemented as well too, or will be implementing as well. Um, and that's just to really create a very welcoming environment so that families and students, when they come and matriculate in Boston Public Schools, that they have a transition period. We have TBE program that is beginning as well too. And, um, as we look to see where the course is, we'd like to create more heritage classes for our students. Ultimately, we really want to look at all of our multilingual learners as an asset coming into our schools. And we want them to demonstrate that asset by them, um, having the seal of biliteracy by the time they graduate. When we talk about a robust student experience, we want to highlight, um, that multilingualism in our students. For the investments that we have upcoming in our, um, budget is really thinking of as we're implementing new programs, how can we provide supports? How can we provide coaching to the schools? How can we provide, um, curriculum supports and curriculum implementation and coaching to educators so that people don't feel like they're on an island doing this by themselves? We're really being intentional. And as the superintendent and Dr. Chen said, and, um, Chief Bloom has stated that we are working, um, intently with the Office of Human Resources to help build up a pipeline of educators who reflect our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we've had quite a robust, um, conversation tonight. Look forward to our next meeting and at this point, Ms. Parvics would like to move on to public comment.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to address the school committee on school-related issues. Questions on specific school matters are referred to the superintendent. Questions on policy matters may be discussed by the committee later. We have twenty-two speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak and I would remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. If your remarks succeed, two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. Once you reach your two minutes, we will allow you to finish your sentence before moving on to the next speaker. Speakers may not be assigned their time to others. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note, the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools or the Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and where you live before you begin. Please sign into Zoom using the name you registered with for public comment and be ready to unmute and turn on your camera when it's your turn to speak. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. Please speak slowly so the interpreter can capture what you're saying. Our first group of speakers is Mike Heisman, John Mudd, Cheryl Buckman, Kenica Kindell, and Rosie Hoskin. Mike Heisman? Mr. Heisman?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Mike Heisman, Dorchester. Mayor Wu and former superintendent Dr. Casellas signed an agreement with DESI that they would produce and publicize a comprehensive facilities plan. Ms. Skipper has broken that promise. Instead, she closes a few schools every year and bushwhacks the school communities after decisions have been made. She deliberately gives them very little time to mobilize opposition before the school committee rubber stamps her proposals. The local version of shock and awe. I'm in agreement with Vice Chair Michael O'Neill and BTU President Eric Berg recalling for a build first, close later policy. Let's stop the current traumatic policy and replace it with the joy of leaving an inadequate facility and arriving to a beautiful and modern new school. At our last meeting, our superintendent presented the Wu Skipper twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. With a paltry three point five percent proposed increase, we are promised another year of austerity, another year of pain and suffering. How many millions are being budgeted for non-disclosure agreements? Has the racial equity tool been used to evaluate this proposed budget? If there is no equity analysis, increased racism is guaranteed. The promise of another year of inclusion done poorly and cheaply instead of inclusion done right. The promise of another year where too many of our children rules that are too cold in the winter and too hot during the warmer weather. The promise of another year where too many of our immigrant children who are blessed being fluent in the language and culture who attend schools with inadequate resources and poor but inexpensive policies. This proposed budget is racist and violent attack on our children. Massive child abuse and neglect will continue. We deserve better. Let's end the BPS Hunger Games.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Mudd.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. I have a couple of comments tonight. First, the budget presented to the school committee highlighted four million dollars in new investments for multilingual learners. But the general fund budget, which you vote on, has a reduction of nearly five million for multilingual programs. And the pages describing a comprehensive budget for multilingual learners in the schools uh, uh, shows a cut of eight, fi, eight million dollars overall and five million of that cut from the budget for schools. With an increase of about a thousand immigrant students this year, why is there such a significant reduction in the budget for multilingual learners? What is being cut? How will the schools cope with the increased number of multilingual learners with less funding? Secondly, there does seem to be, to me, some significant cuts in bilingual staffing and uh, in programs. Uh, there is a cut of twenty-one bilingual education aides, eight bilingual kindergarten teachers, thirty-eight bilingual teachers, as well as fifty-eight positions in single language program, uh, SEI programs for Cape Verde. as SEI programs for Cape Verdean, Spanish, Chinese, Haitian, and so on. If this is just coding without any program implications, please explain it. Finally, on the screening,
Thirty seconds.
On the uh service mapping. Service mapping seems to be serving the the shifting of students into general education with ESL. The only response I heard tonight for cert- student needs under service mapping is ESL. That is the worst approach to educating English learners. English learners benefit, as people have said tonight, on the by access and instruct-
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a former Dever alum, parent to a sixth grader who attends the Dever. I also reside in South Boston. I come to you tonight to oppose the closure of the Dever Elementary. The Dever isn't just a school, but a family-driven community. BPS, you are the ones who said the smaller schools must close. In fact, according to your model, the Dever can fit a large pre-K through six school in the same building. And this school sits at eighty-six percent capacity, and yet it's still being forced to close. You are closing schools with substandard buildings. But that of the Dever facility scores were higher than one, one-third of BPS schools. The Dever went into receivership in two thousand thirteen, promising to make dramatic improvements. Desi too broke a promise, and now they're walking away. Letting BPS to close the school, the Dever under its current receiver has made great gains and is heading to, was heading towards post-receivership. During those meetings with Desi, nothing was mentioned about closure. For BPS to make its claim to close the Dever, they had to look five years backwards and ignored
Thirty seconds.
upward trend in enrollment. Closing the Dever overlooks its greater potential and significant and community significance, transforming the Dever into a full-service community school with targeted investments and innovative programs that can meet the challenges while keeping it open. BPS, you must be committed to keeping the Dever community together. No closure, no split up. The Dever community wants real, honest answers.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Buckman. Your time is up. Our next speaker is um Ki- uh Kenica Kindell is not in the meeting, Rosie Hoskin.
Thank you. Rosie Hosking Roslendale. I am a Sumner parent of two girls, family council advocacy co-chair, a naturalized Latina British citizen, and a proud Bostonian of thirteen years. On behalf of the next three speakers and myself, we're here to provide comments on the merged Sumner Philbrick School budget. First, we note and appreciate many excellent supports already in the budget proposed. We commend Dr. Weeks and her team for welcoming family input and proactively identifying areas to allocate more resources. Although, as you will hear from the others, there is more still needed to support our fragile new community. Superintendent Skipper noted tonight that dollars saved from the facilities improvements are being reinvested into the necessary supports for students. We ask Chief Bloom's team to ensure our merged community can corroborate this claim, especially in regards to culturally competent mental health supports for all our students in a school that has more than seventy percent high needs. There is also a larger policy issue to address. Our experience is that the seniority criterion for choosing which educators retain their roles after a reduction in staffing disproportionately affects our most culturally, linguistically, and ethnically diverse staff due to the upstream difficulties of recruiting and retaining these educators. This must not keep happening in future mergers that are planned for the right sizing of our district by two thousand thirty.
Thirty seconds.
Why? Because the data is clear. Students with educators who reflect their own cultural heritage do better in school than those who do not. Many members of the committee and Dr. Chen made these points tonight. Madam Chair and ma- members of the school committee, please respond with urgency to this issue. For example, by forming a working group to investigate solutions with BTU and other stakeholders to add further criteria to const-
Thank you very much.
...
Your, your time is up.
Unintended.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next group of speaker is Emily Ba- uh Bachi, Megan Devoren, Stephanie Golas, and Dakia Wright. Please raise your hand when I call your name. Hello, you can start.
Hi. I'm Emily Baichi. I am a parent of a Sumner first grader, advocacy co-chair of our family council, and a resident of Jamaica Plain. The current budget allocations have our school losing significant mental health resources, a point eight psychologist and a one full-time social worker, both people of color, leaving this new tender community with wholly inadequate mental health and social emotional supports. Staffing needs to not just meet minimums based on known needs, but also allow capacity to meet as-yet unidentified needs. Yet the budget doesn't seem to even meet the minimum need. The National Association of School Psychologists recommends a minimum of one full-time psychologist for every five hundred students. Our merged school is projected to have almost seven hundred students, more than twenty percent having an IEP, but only one psychologist. And that's with discretionary funding to add point two over the actual allocated. With the additional loss of our only bilingual social worker, mental health resources will be so tight that staff will not be able to, will only be able to triage acute needs and not do preventative work or provide mental health or SEL programming for the broader student population. This lean model for legally required supports also risks being out of compliant, which is an egregious disservice to our most vulnerable residents and will cost just as much in the long run for the district through summer makeup work, compliant procedures, and lost reputation. Madam Chair, we appreciate that Dr. Weeks has already submitted an appeal to increase the psychologist allocation at least an additional point five. And we ask the district to not only approve that request, but to fully restore the allocation of the lost point eight. We also need this lost social worker position to complete the team with culturally competent support and allow SEL programming for all students. We want to ensure a strong start as a new community where all kids are supported. Sufficient mental health support is essential to the school's success and creating a learning environment that is safe, welcoming, and rooted in love, self-love, and mutual respect.
Our next speaker is Megan Devoren. Hello, you can start.
Good evening. My name is Megan Davron. I am a parent to two current Sumner students, and hopefully someday a third. It's lottery season. I am a school site council member and a resident of Roslendale. I'm also a lifelong Bostonian and a proud BPS alum myself. I fully support the testimony tonight of the other Sumner Philbrick parents here with me. Many of the staff members we are losing under the currently proposed budget are bilingual, including three key family-facing roles held by Latino staff. Given that we are rolling out a Spanish dual-language program next year and that our current student population is over fifty percent Hispanic, it is lunacy to consider losing so many of our bilingual staff who are linchpins of our community. Dr. Chen made this point tonight about access to bilingual staff. Here is a proposal to keep at least two of them. First, we seek funding to retain our outstanding director of operations. He has strong relationships with families and staff and is effective at his many duties, not the least of which is overseeing and providing support for lunch and recess coverage, which is, which is essential at our school and every school. Given that the district's one adult to eighty student ratio for lunch monitors is not sufficient to ensure student safety. We also request a bilingual community field coordinator as an additional resource to support the social and emotional health of our students and respond to the overall high needs of students and families in our community, particularly during this disruptive time with the merger, a move to a new possibly now finished building, a rollout of dual language and full inclusion. Finally, our paraprofessionals are an invaluable resource. Most are bilingual and are essential to meeting the needs of our students, particularly our multilingual learners day in and day out. We fully support the BTU request to staff inclusion classrooms with a full-time paraprofessional and to pay these hard-working community members a respectful living wage. Please set our students and our staff up for success by giving them the resources they need.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Golas. You can start.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Golas, um, a parent of two children at the Sumner and a BPS librarian proudly. Um, I'm co-chair of the Sumner SSC, and I've been teaching to since two thousand seven. As a veteran educator who has worked in over a dozen school buildings across four different districts in my career, I understand the demands of the teaching profession and the complexities of licensure. The di- district is pushing teachers in Sumner and throughout the district to a point that is simply not sustainable with practices that are not doing right by our children. Yes, inclusion done well with thought and adequate supports and personnel is good for students, and I've seen this in practice. But inclusion on a shoestring, where teachers teach under multiple licenses while doing the job of two to three individuals, is not good for students or the teacher. Teachers are spending energy staying in compliance with their licensure rather than focusing on their teaching and their practice. This is the plan in place at our school next year as we roll out more inclusion at more grade levels, while also asking our teachers to move to a new school, transition to a dual-language model, and merge communities and school cultures into a new school building. The goal of a merger ought to be to pool our collective resources and take what is best from a community to give students a richer educational experience. Yet here we are asking teachers to do more and to stretch further with less when our schools come together. Allocating supports to the classroom simply based on IEP minutes and five oh four accommodations is not sufficient and is short-sighted. It's not the practice that will meet the needs of all of our students. In this process, we are losing our dedicated reading specialists. So I have to ask, what about general education and vulnerable students with non-academic risk factors who also need literacy support to be on grade level? As a school librarian, I know all too well there are too many factors like absenteeism, family and housing instability, and things that can affect literacy and the ability to learn. We must do better by our teachers and our students. Please respond to the requests in the Sumner parents' testimony tonight, provide more support for this newly emerged community, and meet the BTU on its reasonable request for inclusion done right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Dakia Wright. Dakia Wright declined. So eh, the next group of speakers will need um Spanish support, and that is Hortensia Calderon, Paola Lugo, Maria Mejía, Maria Gómez, Carmen Aguas Vivas, and Carla Castro. Hortensia Calderon? Is not in the meeting. Paola Lugo? It's not in the meeting. Maria Mejía?
Hola, buenas noches, Comité Escolar.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, school committee.
Eh, soy Maria Mejía y vivo en Roseberry y mi hijo estudia en la escuela Blackstone.
My name is Maria Mejía. I live in Roxbury, and uh my son goes to the Blackstone School.
Como madre estoy agradecida del programa de padres mentores.
As I say, mother, I have to say that I appreciate very much the me- parent-mentor program.
Ya que ha hecho un cambio en mi vida de un antes y un después.
So this has provided a significant change in my life if you, if we, if I see my life before and after.
Como madre, mentora, y coordinadora.
I have to say I'm a coordinator, as a mom that is a mentor and a coordinator at the same time.
El apoyo que están recibiendo las escuelas.
I have to mention as well that the support that this parent-mentor program is providing to schools.
Ha hecho un impacto y cambio en muchas familias.
Has had a significant impact and that changes in many different families.
Porque hoy hay profesionales que han salido del programa de padres mentores.
Because we have professionals that actually have graduated from this particular parent-mentor program.
Yo soy un ejemplo vivo porque estoy en college.
I am a good example of this because I'm actually going through college right now.
Nosotros queremos que el programa lo sigan apoyando y los incluyan en el presupuesto del año próximo.
So our hope is certainly that this program continues to be supported and it is part of the budget in this year, the parent-mentor program that is.
Para que los maestros se sientan apoyados.
For the purpose to provide enough support to the teachers and they feel supported by us as well.
Ya que hay muchos maestros que tienen de dieciocho a diecinueve, de dieciocho a veinte niños en un salón de clase.
We have to consider the numerous amount of students that each teacher has per class. Sometimes eighteen, twenty students per teacher per class.
Y créame que hagen, que hemos hecho la diferencia en un salón de clase.
And believe me, we are able to make a difference inside of the classroom.
El programa deben, debe continuar, no pararlo.
This program has to be continued, not stopped.
Ya que con la fusión de muchas escuelas van a necesitar del programa de padres mentores. Muchas gracias, buenas noches.
Provided that when the schools are being fused or working together, they are going to need the support of a parent program, the programs that they have. And thank you very much, the parent programs, mentor programs.
Eh, gracias. The next speaker is Maria Gómez.
Maria Gómez, puede pasar al micrófono? Maria Gómez?
Buenas noches.
Good evening. Adelante, Maria.
Okay. Mi nombre es Maria Gómez y soy madre mentora en la escuela Blackstone.
My name is Maria Gómez, and I am a mother mentor at the Blackstone School.
Y vivo en, y vivo en, en West Roseberry.
I do live in West Roxbury.
Tengo dos niños que estudian en BPS, Margarita Muñiz y Blackstone.
I do have two kids that are part of the BPS system. They go to Margarita Muñiz and the Blackstone School.
El programa de padres mentores ha sido un cambio en mí.
The parent mentor program has brought many changes to my life, to myself.
Porque ya que tengo un niño con altas necesidades especiales.
I have to consider that I have a kid with special needs myself.
No podía encontrar un trabajo con horario accesible a la escuela.
I was not able to find a job that had the flexibility to, for my kid to go to school.
De mi eh, de la escuela, de mis hijos, ahora siendo mentora.
But the fact I, I am a parent mentor at the present time at their schools, my son's schools.
Puedo trabajar y estudiar a la misma vez.
I do have the ability to work and study at the same time.
Y gracias a la escalera de oportunidades que nos ofrece este programa.
And thank to this ladder of opportunities that this program provides to us, the parent-mentor program that is.
Actualmente estudio- Actualmente estudio inglés.
At the present time, I am studying English.
Estando en la escuela, estoy más involucrada con la educación de mi hijo.
The fact that I'm spending more time at school gives me the opportunity to be more involved in my kids', my sons' education.
Y he podido ver las necesidades que tienen las escuelas.
I have been able to witness in the process the needs that each school has.
De más ayuda para los maestros y estudiantes.
Needs related to the additional help that the teachers and the students themselves need.
Especialmente en los niños como el mío que tiene altas necesidades especiales o niños aprendices de inglés, el idioma inglés español.
Particularly the English language learners, kids that speak English and Spanish in particular, and kids with high special needs such as my son.
Para nadie es un secreto que hay salones de clase con más de quince a dieciocho estudiantes.
It should not be a secret for anybody that there are classrooms that have more than fifteen, up to eighteen students sometimes.
Y estos maestros están solos sin un paraprofesional.
And these teachers are by themselves sometimes with or without a paraprofession.
Sin embargo, estos mentores estamos ahí para dar ese soporte que necesitan los estudiantes.
Even though that's why we are there as mentors, as parent mentors, to provide the supports that our students need.
Y los maestros.
Yeah, the teachers as well.
Pienso que el distrito debe seguir apoyando este programa.
It is my personal belief that the district has to continue supporting this particular parent-mentor program.
Que las familias como la mía puedan salir adelante y tener metas y ser útil.
The families like my family can be successful, have goals and objectives, and be of good use to our community.
Y sentirse útil. Quiero ver este programa en todas nuestras escuelas. Muchas gracias, buenas noches.
It will give us the feeling of being helpful to our community and every school should have this particular program. Thank you very much for listening to me and good night, everybody.
Muchas gracias. Carmen Aguas Vivas.
Ella es Carmen Aguas Vivas. Pase el micrófono, por favor. Tiene la palabra.
Buenas noches, no sé si me escuchan.
Sí, puede comenzar, por favor. Gracias.
Mi nombre es Carmen Aguas Vivas.
My name is Carmen Aguas Vivas.
Soy dominicana. Vine a este país hace cinco meses con mis tres niños.
Originally from the Dominican Republic, I came to this country about five months ago with my children.
Uno de mis temores al llegar acá era el sistema educativo para mis niños.
What are my biggest fears when I arrived to the country was the educational system that my kids were going to be part of.
Por lo que uno de mis objetivos era buscar una manera de cómo yo estar dentro de la escuela.
Therefore, one of my objectives became different ways of how can I be involved and be inside of a school, being able to help.
Encontré el programa de San Steven, que llegó, la información me llegó.
I have to mention that then I became aware of the San Stevens program, that I did receive their information.
De esa manera logré entrar a las escuelas. Mis niños están en la escuela Blackstone.
So by doing so through San Stevens, I was able to get involved with the Blackstone School. My kids go to the Blackstone School.
Actualmente estamos residiendo en Roseberry.
At the present time, we do reside in Roxbury.
Afortunadamente tengo la oportunidad de estar en la escuela, ver el progreso de mis niños.
Fortunately, I do have the opportunity of being inside of a school, seeing my kids' progress in the process.
Eh, no creo que el programa de San Stevens sepa el impacto emocional que hace en la vida de nosotros como padres mentores, al igual que en la vida de nuestros niños.
I do not know up to which point San Stevens know the huge impact that that particular program has in us as parents and the impact that it has in the kids that we help for.
Me atrevo a ir más allá, a decir que también ha impactado lo que es el sistema educativo.
Morever, I would have to say that this parent program has a significant impact, to the point of being impactful as well in the educational system, I have to say.
Yo siento paz al saber que mis niños tienen un padre, una madre mentora que les apoya emocionalmente.
It fills my heart with peace knowing that my kids have a parent mentor that is supporting that emotionally.
Para este apoyo emocional en el proceso del aprendizaje del idioma inglés.
It's important to provide this emotional type of help in the process of learning the English language.
Entiendo que este programa aporta muchísimo a la estabilidad emocional de nuestros niños y al sistema educativo.
That is very important and it is my understanding that this particular program provides a lot of emotional stability as well as good things to the education system.
Esperamos que todas las escuelas tengan el privilegio de tener el programa.
So it is our hope, it is certainly our hope that every school has the privilege of having this parent-mentor program.
Sería una pena que el programa no pueda continuar y que sus fondos sean de manera externa.
Thirty seconds.
It will be very unfortunate that these programs cannot continue and that they depend on external funding for their continuity.
Así que nuestra meta es que pueda ser parte del fondo central del distrito educativo para que pueda continuar.
Our goal is that these programs have the continuity and they are part of, an important part of the central budget of the district so they can have the continuity of this parent program.
Es que el sistema educativo pueda apreciar la importancia que tiene este, este programa. Muchísimas gracias.
And the educational system could appreciate how important this parent-mentor program is and thank you very much for hearing what I have to say.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches. Our next speakers, Carla Castro and Felicia Dor Sant are not in the meeting. So we will continue with the next group, next group of speakers. It's Javal Abdul Rahman, Emily Schuman, Madison Morley, and Savannah Lewis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. You can start.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Javal Abdul Rahman. I am a parent of two students in third and fifth grade in Dever School. I live in Dorchester just across from Dever School since 2004. Thanks for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I strongly request that Dever Elementary School to be maintained to serve the community of Columbia Point and surrounding areas. I am here tonight to discuss one of BPS reasons for closing Dever School. BPS argues that school's facility construction does not meet its standards. However, Dever has a history of producing successful graduates and current students continue to succeed, which shows that whatever the construction status is now, it is still sufficient to graduate successful students. This proves that the existing school condition is not a barrier to quality education. My suggested solutions are the required maintenance could be done during summer breaks over time. Second, instead of closing, there are other solutions such as relocating or merging Dever with another school. If BPS insisting on closing the school, I respectfully request a delay of four to five years to allow most current students to graduate before closing the school. My last statement, based on the above facts, I hope BPS reconsider the closure.
Thirty seconds.
Our demand is please keep Dever Schools open, please. It is not just a school facility, it is a family community. If we keep our family community together, ladies and gentlemen, I hope BPS agree to keep Dever School to serve the community of Columbia Point and surrounding communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Emily Schuman. Emily Schuman is not in the meeting. Madison Morley. Good evening.
My name is Madison Morley and I'm speaking tonight on the proposed closure of the Dever. As a teacher at the Dever and a resident right here in Dorchester, I'm appalled by BPS's lack of concern for my students and the impacts they will face upon this closure. As I have testified here before, the Dever is a full-inclusion school for both special education and English as a second language, a combination that exists in very few other schools in Boston, if any. Our unique combination allows my highest need students to be placed in a general education classroom instead of being pulled out and stigmatized for being different. BPS has spoken so many times about the building experience score and how they will work to ensure all students move to a school with an equal or higher building experience. Well, what about classroom experience scores? You can't tell me that a student in a sub-separate classroom and an inclusion classroom are going to have the same experience. So don't tell our families that students will continue to receive their services because anyone who has spent even a day in a classroom can see the differences between a classroom where one teacher, teaching with three licenses, is just checking a box on an IEP versus a classroom with a thoughtfully planned co-taught inclusion practices. At a time when BPS is pausing its rollout of inclusion classrooms across the city, can you guarantee that my students will find another inclusion placement? Because I can't, no one can. Boston cannot afford to
Thirty seconds.
Inclusion program like the Dever. They need us to serve as a model for other schools when they finally decide to commit to inclusion done right. Keep our community together, keep us in our building, move us, merge us. We will do whatever is necessary to fight for both our students and for inclusion in all of BPS. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Savannah Lewis. Please accept the prompt. So it seems like Savannah Lewis is not accepting the prompt. And our next speakers, Christian Grant and Christine Autherson are not in the meeting. So that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex, and I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. Your input is critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendations for the next fiscal year. Thank you, and I want to remind you all that you can view all of the budget documents and share your feedback by visiting bostonpublicschools.org/budget. You can also email your comments to the school committee. The committee will hold its next meeting on Wednesday, February 26th at 5:30 PM. The next remote budget hearing will take place on Wednesday, March 5th at 5:30 PM, at which time the committee will receive a presentation focused on the central budget. Our final remote budget hearing will take place on Wednesday, March 19th at 6:30 PM, prior to the school committee meeting. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please follow the law?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cretanandez? Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes, I said yes.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. This hearing is adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Take care.